Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, March 8th, 2022. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Council members Aquino.
Here.
Chalam Chirla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
And Howell.
Here.
Madam Mayor, if I may just make an announcement, there's no reporting out for any of the items on the close session agenda.
Okay, thank you. If you will join me on the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any agenda update?
You have two agenda updates this evening. Both Items 10 and Item 11 have revised in additional information. This has been made available to the public at the back table and online and has been distributed to the city council members.
Okay, with that, we will move to business from the floor, which is an opportunity for the members of the public to speak to the council on any items that are not on the agenda.
You have two requests to speak this evening under Business from the Floor. First will be Michael Harris. Michael will be followed by Sarah Norberg. Come on down, Michael. We'll start the three-minute timer. You will notice a little light there on the podium that will give you an idea when you get your sum-up time.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. First, I'd be remiss if I didn't say it's International Women's Day. You know, I've got two mamas and four daughters, so you know, I did what I'm supposed to do. They still try to, I guess the word is to, well, my mom is still trying to raise me, right? I was raised right, but I fight it a lot. Today, I come to ask for consideration for an agenda item in the future for Juneteenth. It's a federal holiday. As you can imagine, it wasn't easy to get it done at the federal level. And, well, I wasn't happy calling it Independence Day. It should be Freedom Day, but you know, you don't like fight the perfect when you've got some good. So, you know, we'll deal with it here in California as Freedom Day, which it is in the legislation. But right at the turn of the century, we've been celebrating Juneteenth officially here in Folsom, at Negro Bar, various places around town, up at the Mormon Island Relocation Cemetery. Some know about William Alexander Leidisdorf, 1844, Negro Bar, the town, Granite City, the city of Folsom, all that history. But Juneteenth is really an opportunity to learn about America. It's not a black holiday, it's an American holiday. I took some of the governor's staff to task. It's like, it's not, this ain't the Red, Black, Green Day. That's later. This is about red, white, and blue colored troops fighting in the Civil War. Red, white, and blue. Those are the colors of Juneteenth. The Juneteenth flag is red, white, and blue. And, you know, as you can imagine, the Black Cocks was kind of upset with me. I don't mind people getting upset with me. Deal with the history, and if I'm wrong, rescue me, because that's what I rest my case on, is the primary source documentation, as I've been trained. So the idea that it's a federal holiday, it's on the path to being a state holiday, as God has made it happen, the way the sun, moon, and stars work, it's a Sunday this year, Juneteenth, so we have another year to play with, which is probably a good thing. We need to pray about it. And then, whoever your God is in their faith, just live it. I don't care what you do, just live it. So the idea is that, again, at some future date, to put it on the agenda and have a discourse in how other cities are doing and how other states have done it. Ironically, Boston is leading the way, which is pretty interesting. I was talking earlier with the railroad guy, the first engine here, the first railroad west of Mississippi came from Boston. You know, Senator Markey in Boston led the way for Juneteenth to little bitty Asian woman named Woo that's dealing with urban agriculture, I mean, in a way that just hasn't been done before. So I urge consideration for official Juneteenth holiday.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker will be Sarah Norberg. Come over to the podium, to your left there. There you go.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for affording me the chance to speak. Just like Michael Harris, I want to speak in favor of recognizing Juneteenth as a city-paid holiday. Like he mentioned, the state is working on hopefully recognizing Juneteenth as a state-paid holiday. It has not yet happened. I can hardly think of something more exciting for the city of Folsom to embrace than preempting the state, recognizing Juneteenth as a paid holiday. Growing up in Folsom through middle school, high school, I don't remember learning as much of the black history as I wish I would have, and it's as an adult that I learned about Leeds Dorf being considered like the first black millionaire in America, not just in the state. So I wish, you know, certain elements of multiracial ethnic history were more infused in the curriculum, but now's a great opportunity to recognize the importance of Juneteenth here at the city level. So similarly, I would ask that it be added to the agenda at some future city council meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more request to speak from online, and that will be Margie Donovan. Margie, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I've had problems. This is laid out in an inaccessible way. My name is Margie Donovan. I am a resident of the city of Folsom. I have worked diligently with Lydia Knopka in this wonderful city to make this packet accessible to me. We have tried up till 5:45 this evening to get me the handout, a 50-something-page handout in an accessible format for the agenda item on zoning. The city of Folsom's website does not meet Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, nor the ADA, nor WCAG standards. I recommend two things. I recommend that this city hires an accessibility specialist to evaluate the website, not a website person, an accessibility specialist. I left Lydia Knopka with some resources. I should have full access to all documents that this city posts on their website. My second request is that the agenda item dealing with zoning be postponed due to inaccessibility and a violation of Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and the Americans with Disability Act to a future meeting where that packet is fully accessible to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you submit a blue card, sir?
Pardon?
Did you submit a card on?
Yes.
Business from the floor?
Yeah, the name's Hubbard Booze on it. I incorrectly put down Item 11 on it. It's more open business.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, anyway, well, good evening. My name's Hubbard Booze. I've been a resident of Folsom and Prospector Court for 37 years. Tonight, I want to speak on the group home permitting process in Folsom. The Folsom Planning Department has recently approved a business, a group home, at 130 Prospector Court to treat alcohol and drug abuse. While this may be legal per state law, it's just plain wrong to place a group home business on the end of a quiet cul-de-sac where children play and retired couples go to retire. We know group homes bring issues to a neighborhood, and one group home that comes to mind is the one on Madison Avenue, down by Hazel, across the street from Safeway, where they've expanded from one home to approximately five. They've taken over the street parking, and in addition, the occupants wander the street in the area. On Prospector Court, we've already had incidences of increased traffic and speeders on a cul-de-sac. This is a cul-de-sac where there's multiple homes with children under 10 that reside there. Bottom line, I don't want a business that addresses, well, not addresses, but brings in drug and alcohol abusers walking the streets two houses down from me. And a home business like this, and again, I emphasize "business," should not be allowed in a residential area. And basically, I'd like to team with the city lawyer, and there's multiple people here from the development that also are going to speak, and the planning department, because bottom line is, when they did this, they didn't let anybody know about anything. If you want to change your windows out in your house in Folsom, they put a sign on the lawn saying, "Permitting is going on, and you have a right to find out what's going on and everything." The planning department approved this, letting no one know. Now, I did some research. Other cities have addressed this also. Huntington Beach, Costa Mesa, Loverry Vieira, they all take care of it, and they address it in a way, if there's an issue, go to code enforcement. So when the licensing appears whenever, they know what kind of issues are accumulated. But basically, the planning department, city of Folsom, and the process is broken. All they did was, when we wanted information, punt us down to the state, and that's not it. I'm a resident of Folsom. This is a document that went approved by the city of Folsom, and it needs to be addressed by the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak to any items that are not on the Okay, in which case, we're going to move, in which case, we're going to move to scheduled presentations if Eileen Reynolds and Gary Strong would meet me down front. Lydia, the big print one's not here. See, it's in this size font, and normally, there is a larger one. So if I miss something, this is Lydia Knopka's fault. Proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming the month of March 2022 as American Red Cross Month in the city of Folsom. Whereas in times of crisis, people in Folsom come together to care for one another. This humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers here in Folsom. And whereas in 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping youngers into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Folsom who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas in Folsom, the contributors of local Red, contributions of local Red Cross volunteers, we approach the most vulnerable in their darkest hours, whether providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires, donating essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid, which is probably very timely when what's going on in other parts of the world today. Whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton. She lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join in this commitment to give back in our community. Now therefore, I, Terry Howell, mayor of the city of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, hereby proclaim March 2022 as Red Cross Month and encourage community members to reach out and support their humanitarian mission. Proclaim this eighth day of March 2022.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Howell. Thank you, council members, very much for this honor. This mic?
Yep.
Thank you for this honor. We are super pleased to be here. My name is Eileen Reynolds. I'm the chair of the board for the American California Gold Country Region, American Red Cross, and I live here in Folsom. I would also like to introduce our entourage here. Gary Strong is our CEO for the American Red Cross here in our region, and these other three who are with me are also proud Folsom residents who are, one, actually, Tracy is an immediate past chair of the board, so I'm the current chair. So two Folsomites following each other, chairing the board for a 26-county region. Gerard Gourvera is the next one, and he's a resident of Folsom, a proud member of our Mission Committee, and then Dave Hyland, who's also a member of our, actually, he's our chair of our Mission Committee.
You're welcome to move to Folsom anytime.
No, he's actually here. So the only one that isn't a resident of Folsom is Gary, and he's right up the street at Granite Bay, so we're working on him. Anyway, I would like to also have-
As long as you shop here, that's good.
That's right. I also want to share this honor. And I'm sorry, Steve Walsh is also a resident of Folsom, and he handles all the media relations for the Red Cross on staff.
Thank you for all you guys do.
Gary, just a few minutes, or less than a few minutes, and go ahead.
Okay, so the proclamation, I think, says it well, the work that we do at the Red Cross, and I want to thank the mayor and the city council for recognizing us with this proclamation. You should know that since 1943, we've had a national proclamation for the American Red Cross for the month of March, and we use this month to try to get around and spread the word as far and wide as we can about the good work that the Red Cross does. As Eileen mentioned, we're a 26-county region that is headquartered, actually, just next door in Sacramento, and you could tell we are overweighted by leadership on our board. We have an 18-member board, and I think five or six of them are Folsom residents, so certainly appreciate it. And certainly, I'm really proud of the work that we do here locally. As I talked about in the proclamation, there's a lot of work that we do that you don't hear a lot about. Wildfires you hear about, they don't really affect cities all that often, but the home fires that we're going to every night, giving people food, giving people shelter and comfort, and the training that we provide and the blood that we collect, life-saving blood, and installing smoke alarms in people's homes who can't afford it, all ways to make the community safer, and that happens right here in Folsom as well as elsewhere. So appreciate all of the support that we get from the Folsom community, and I would be remiss if I didn't remind everyone that the Red Cross is not a government agency. We live because we have generous donors and we have volunteers that give us their hours, and we never have enough of those donors and we never have enough of those hours. So if anyone that is an earshot, has any desire to help out with the Red Cross, we can use you. Go to redcross.org, and we'll get you done.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we will move on to our consent calendar. Would anybody like to pull anything?
I'll move Items 2 through 9, unless somebody wants to pull one.
Yeah, I would like to pull Item 3, please.
Okay.
I second. Okay, so you have a motion for 2, and then 4 through 9.
Council members Aquino.
Yes.
Chalam Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Sarah?
Yeah, I don't need a staff report or anything, Amy. I'm thrilled to support this resolution, but I do appreciate the map at the back of the staff report that shows where other landmark trees are in the city, and I would just use this item to request the city manager bring us additional nominations for landmark trees. I'm particularly thinking about city-owned property where PG&E was wanting to do their clearcutting, and also, if there are what we think are potential landmark trees on private property, rather than waiting for somebody to come to us, if we could be proactive and go to them, let them know about the designation and see if they're willing, I'm particularly thinking about prison property, so approaching the CDCR before the state of California gets any ideas about that land. So anyway, with that, I don't know, I think there's a member of the public who wants to speak to this item.
Mr. Klein?
Yeah, you have a request to speak from Bruce Klein? I'll start your three minutes.
Yeah.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Aquino, thank you very much for pulling the item, and thank you very much for the city council to recognize this important tree, and hats off to Cal ISO for recognizing the value of a 150-year-old oak tree on their property and petition to have landmark status. I echo Councilmember Aquino's desire. There are some beautiful, beautiful trees up through the oak corridor. As the city knows, we battled PG&E on those, got a good agreement from PG&E. Thank you so much, PG&E, for stepping up and protecting those trees, so I look forward to coming here in the future to talk about more landmark trees. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. With that, I'll move Resolution Number 10804.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalam Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. That moves us to Item 10, public hearing.
Item number 10 is public hearing number 5 under the California Voting Rights Act, and this includes ordinance number 1324, an ordinance of the city of Folsom establishing a by-district election process in five council districts pursuant to California Elections Code Section 10010, and adding new sections to Chapter 2.06 of the Folsom Municipal Code to provide for city council election districts. This will be introduction and first reading. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Madam Mayor and the members of the city council. Stephen Wong, City Attorney. As you know, the process to switch to by-district election takes five public hearings. Following adoption of Resolution of Intention on July 27, 2021, and with a very comprehensive and robust public outreach and engagement, the city council held public hearings 1 through 4 and selected Preferred Map 2 for adoption as the final district map. This is public hearing number 5, the last of the mandatory public hearings to complete the transition process. Before you tonight is the ordinance that will formally establish the by-district election process in the city of Folsom. Second reading and adoption of the ordinance is scheduled for March 22. The ordinance incorporates Preferred Map 2 as the final district map for the initial council districts. The city council will continue to have five council members elected with staggered terms. Districts 1, 3, and 5 are sequenced for the November 2022 election. 2 and 4 are sequenced for the 2024 election. Only registered voters residing in a district are eligible to run for council member for that district. Similarly, only registered voters residing in the candidate's district can vote for that candidate. Each term remains four years, and no current council member's term will be cut short. That is my very short and summarized staff report, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions of staff?
No questions.
Okay.
This is a public hearing, so, Madam Mayor, if you would-
Okay, so I will open the public hearing. I believe we have one request to speak.
You have one request to speak from Cheryl Davis. And after Cheryl, we do have an online request to speak, so.
Good evening, Mayor Howell and members of the city council. My name is Cheryl Davis, and I'm a 13-year resident of Folsom. Excuse me. Voters are supposed to choose their elected officials. Folsom voters chose you, five council members, sorry, this way, to serve the city for your respective four-year terms. When, as incumbent council members, you drew district blinds to protect your seats, though, you in effect skewed future Folsom elections, made them less competitive, and undermined Folsom's voters' ability to decide whether to retain you in office for an additional four years. The map, the Preferred Map Number 2, does not respect communities of interest. It gerrymanders districts to benefit council members by splitting major neighborhoods of Lexington Hills, Prairie Oaks, Willow Oaks, parts of East Broadstone, and central Folsom. As I've said before, I believe the map violates the Fair Maps Act because it favors incumbents over communities. Over the past nine months, going through this process with you, I've learned more about the CVRA than I ever thought I would. My interest in district elections was, I believe, in district elections, but learning about the CVRA and based on your demographer's own data, it appears that this map does not create the strong influence district of Asian voters that are entitled to it under the CVRA, and the sequencing appears to dilute their influence. Finally, as I understand it, and I'm not a lawyer, but just hearing some of the city attorney's discussions, I understand that this map needs to go back to court for it to be approved, that tonight might not be the final approval, and I just wanted to raise that. Not sure if that's correct or not, but I do agree with Mayor Howell, what she said a couple of hearings ago. The maps were messy. They didn't have to be that way. The council just needed to put our community interest over their own interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a request. We have, our next item, we have, right now, we have 30 people that have requested to speak, and I see more cards coming, so I would just like to request that we, if everybody wants to clap right now and just get it out of your system, that'd be great, but if we have clapping after every speaker, right now, we've got 90 minutes worth of speaker cards for that item, and we're going to be here very late this evening, so if we could refrain from the clapping, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, your next request to speak is from online, Muriel Bronstein. Muriel, we'll go ahead and start your clock, and I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Thank you. Mayor Howell and council members, my name is Muriel Bronstein. I've lived in the Toma Station for over 30 years. The by-district map, as it's now drawn, does not respect communities of interest and protects current council members as the extensive Folsom residents. It also violates the Fair Maps Act. This map needs to be presented to the court for approval. Also, Attorney Scott Rafferty needs to be awarded reasonable attorney fees for as many hours that he has had to spend on this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other requests from online attendees to speak on this item? I don't see any.
Hello? Hello?
Hello? Is this Mr. Rafferty?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I had my stuff.
Okay, go ahead and start. I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left.
Well, this is a day to celebrate because it's recognition by the city, long overdue, that there will be district elections. But at the same time, it's a defiance of the law because no other city that has violated the safe harbor has taken it upon itself to claim that it can unilaterally establish districts. It needs to go to the court because the court has a duty under the law to set a tailored remedy. Your attorney told you this. He told you that if you went past the safe harbor, you would lose your ability to control your districts. You've done that, and you have lost that ability. You need to demonstrate to the court that this is a lawful map that respects the Fair Maps Act, that it creates an equal opportunity for Asian-American electors, and your failure to acknowledge that is a fundamental attack on democracy. This shouldn't be happening in California. Just today, we signed an agreement with West Sacramento to have the map that they developed through their hearings presented to the court in exactly this manner, and they're paying attorney fees because this has gone on for 16 months, not the 145 days set forth in the safe harbor. So I urge you to move forward with your map, but then to submit it to the court and to respect the process, respect the law. You are incumbents. You were elected at large. That system is being abolished. You're no longer incumbent. You won't be listed as incumbents on the ballot when you run for district election. So I would urge you to take seriously the fact that you should not be accusing your voters without regard to the mandates of the law. Thank you very much, and congratulations on moving forward with district elections.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other hand raised, but before we move on, I want to make sure there are any other callers on the line who wish to speak on this item? Madam Mayor, there are no more requests to speak from online attendees.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Any questions, comments of council members?
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance number 1324.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Chalam Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rodriguez. Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. With that, we move on to item number 11.
Okay, item number 11 this evening is ordinance number 1325, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 17.61 of the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to home occupations. And again, this will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Mayor Howell, members of the council, I'm Desmond Perrington, principal planner in the Community Development Department. I'm here tonight to present to you the recommendation...
You might want to just use the arrow keys on the keyboard, Desmond.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. That's not working either. Let's see. All right, well, that works. Okay. Sorry about the technical difficulties. Yeah, that wasn't working. Yeah. So tonight, staff recommends that the city council introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 1325, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 17.61 of the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to home occupations. So as you may already be aware, there are a number of key issues and questions associated with the update for this ordinance. A lot of that centers around the types of businesses allowed, particularly as it relates to the sale of firearms, sale of ammunition, ammunition manufacturer and reload sales, tattoo parlors, and assembly and manufacturing. The other question contained in this ordinance is if these are not allowed in commercial zones or subject to additional restrictions in commercial zones, should they be allowed as home occupations? The other question that was one of the original points that caused staff to take a look at this was whether homes should be allowed to create commercial storefronts on their homes to support their home-based businesses. And finally, another major question contained in the, in the ordinance or addressed in the ordinance is whether the city council wants to continue to hear appeals related to home occupation permits. The current ordinance allows for two levels of appeal. One of the things that the, that staff had discussed with the planning commission was whether that should be reduced to one, given that this is generally considered a minor permit. In other words, you meet the regulations or you don't. This was brought before Planning Commission on three times. First, on May 15, where we conducted a workshop with Planning Commission, members of the public, and then again on September 1 and on November 17. These were two hearings at which the Planning Commission directed a number of changes and ultimately approved those changes on a vote of six to one. The changes increased the number of firearms that could be sold at a home-based business that sells firearms. Again, just as a reminder, our current ordinance has no prohibited uses list, so there is no restriction on the type of business so long as they can meet the requirements in the existing code. They also removed tattoo parlors, ammunition sales, ammunition manufacturer and reload, and assembly and manufacturing for the prohibited uses list. They increased the number of clients that could visit at one time, and they increased the number of daily visitors. They also expressed, as I mentioned earlier, that they did not want to see just one level of appeal. They wanted to maintain the two levels that are currently in the ordinance as it exists today's. All the, all these changes that they had directed are included in the ordinance before you this evening.
Desmond, can I ask one? I'm sorry to interrupt, but...
Is there a mic on?
Yes, it is. Can you go back one slide, Desmond?
Yep.
Okay. I just want to clarify this. The current code makes no mention of firearms, so there is no limit on the number of firearms that could be sold at one time.
That is correct.
So when you talk about the increase from two to four, you're talking about city staff originally recommended to the Planning Commission a maximum of two.
That's correct.
The Planning Commission said, no, let's do four.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you for...
But compared to the current code, you're going from no limit whatsoever to four.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The reason for the changes that the Planning Commission directed is they wanted to be supportive of home-based business activity, and they wanted to provide more flexibility. They also noted in their direction to staff that the businesses, most of the businesses that they took off of the prohibited uses list are already regulated by state and/or, and/or the federal government through licensing and reviews and so forth. And those include firearms, ammunition, and tattoo parlors. So originally, the Community Development Department was asked to revisit the home occupation ordinance because of the increase in overall home-based business activity nationwide, the COVID restrictions and its impact on smaller businesses, and also because we had interest in actually some businesses that had developed commercial storefronts for their home-based business.
Desmond, that, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, I'm pretty sure that was one, one instance.
That is correct. We did get inquiries from others that were interested in possibly doing something similar, but that is, it was only one at that time.
So just for the, for the purposes of the people that are in this room that probably don't know what really prompted this, there was a barber in town that had been located within a commercial center. For a variety of reasons, he chose to move his clientele to a portion of his garage that had been converted to a barber shop. So I just want people to understand that that's what started all of this.
So just by way of background, a home-based business is any business-related use that's in a residential structure, regardless of whether that's a home, an accessory structure to the home, and that home could be a rental. It could also be in an apartment as well. The general plan has a very specific policy as it relates to home-based businesses, and it's designed to be protective of the character of the residential unit and residential neighborhood. The current regulations already regulate quite a few aspects of this: the size, the number of employees, clients, vehicles, parking, deliveries, signage, and nuisances. Many of these are unchanged, but I will later in the presentation call out those specific areas where we did recommend changes, and those are included in the ordinance. As I noted also previously, the current ordinance does, has no prohibited uses list. The current process is that they submit an application to the Community Development Department. Our staff reviews that. A city business license is also required, so they must obtain that as well. It's allowed in any residential, any residential zone. Again, has to comply with the requirements that are on the book. The director and the commission both have the ability to add additional conditions, and it can be appealed to the commission and the council, and then it's supposed to be renewed every year, which is conducted by the Finance Department. If we do get complaints or concerns raised about a home occupation, those are handled by our Code Enforcement Department. Just wanted to give you a little bit of context with relation to how Folsom compares to our other neighboring jurisdictions. As you can see, overall, we're generally pretty generous when it comes to home-based businesses. We allow more of the home to be used for the business activity. We allow signage, and we do allow onsite sales. As you can see, no jurisdiction in our, in our region or in this comparison group allows for storefronts. Similarly, on a comparison of some of the more controversial uses in our, in our region, we are currently the only one that allows for onsite firearm sales. The rest of the jurisdictions only allowed them as a home office where they can conduct business, but they cannot physically sell firearms or ammunition from the home. They need to do that through mail order, online, or off-site transactions. With regard to ammunition manufacturer and reload, that would be allowed under the new proposed ordinance. It's currently not allowed, and I'm gonna get to this a little bit later in the presentation with regard to the fire code and how that affects this. The other couple of things that I wanted to call out were manufacturing and tattoo body art parlors. Tattoo and body art parlors are not allowed in most other jurisdictions. They're not prohibited here, either under the existing or the new ordinance. And then manufacturing, most jurisdictions limit it to small appliances or electronics, you know, like small personal electronics. They put some restrictions on it. Ours currently doesn't have, have that. And then the, with regard to animal kennels, pretty much none of the, none of the other jurisdictions allow animal kennels. We do allow for petsitting, those types of activities, but not actual the kenneling of animals because they really can't comply with the noise and other nuisance requirements.
So can I interrupt and ask just a quick question?
Sure.
So, so as it relates to manufacturing, if you can just go back for a second, what is intended, what's the intended meaning of manufacturing? Because that is so broad that it could be assembling T-shirts from cut parts, and it could be building automobiles, one at a time, I suppose, in a home, but, you know.
Unless you have a really big garage.
So the reason that the Planning Commission took this off of the prohibited uses list was because they felt that the city already had built into the ordinance the nuisance prohibitions. The provisions against vibration, the provisions against noise, odor. Basically, if you're, if you're hearing anything or feeling anything outside of the, of the home, then you're violating the provisions. And so that's why they felt comfortable taking that off the, off the list.
Gotcha.
It is a very broad category, admittedly, and it's very difficult for us as staff to identify every single type of assembly or manufacturing use.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
Desmond, I have one quick question. Could you please explain that off-site sales only? I know you have a no and asterisk on the first asterisk. Is other cities have the home-based business but not the actual weapons in their house?
Yeah, so when I talked with other jurisdictions, some of them expressly prohibited firearm sales, period. But when I talked to them, they said the only instance where they would allow it was if it's a home office. In other words, you know, they, they, you know, they advertise, they answer phone calls, they do paperwork, all of that. But when it goes to actually making the transaction between the seller and the buyer, they either conduct that off-site, so they go to the, to the buyer's home, or they go to a parking lot or something like, like that and make the transaction there. They do not do it at the, at the home. So, or they do it via mail order, or they do it on online sales, where they're selling it online and then they, they ship it out again during mail order. So in that, in that instance, you know, they would have the firearm and the ammunition that they sell. They would package those up and then, and then send those, send those off.
That's what the research, you know, by talking to the other cities...
Yeah, that's what the research and talking with the surrounding jurisdictions and the information that I could find on their ordinances and talking to their staff, that was what was communicated to me.
Okay. Thank you.
In general, our rules have worked reasonably well, but we have had some complaints, which I'll get to in a minute, and there were a number of areas where staff felt and the commission agreed that we need to take a look at, and those were, you know, the list of prohibited businesses.
Desmond, what were the, what were the recent complaints?
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna get to that in just a second.
Okay.
Okay. So over the five years, we've had approximately 100, 100 complaints related to home-based businesses. Too many vehicles is a fairly common complaint, or commercial vehicles or trailers that are parked at the home, you know, materials that are stored in plain sight, where they have too many visitors, too many deliveries, or they have nighttime activity which they're, which they're not supposed to have, or they've got larger signs and they're allowed. And then, in a, in a few cases, we've had some alterations to the home that weren't allowed. So in terms of the outreach that we've done, not just at this meeting, but at the Planning Commission meeting, we did the required 10-day public hearing notice. We also sent emails to the approximately 1,000 home-based businesses that we have here in, in Folsom. We emailed four weeks, and again, one week before the hearing to over 500 residents and neighborhood associations, as well as those home-based businesses. There were social media posts and information in the city's e-newsletter regarding this. As I mentioned, we had a public workshop and these other dates, and we've been posting information on our zoning code site as well. So just quickly on the May 5 Commission workshop, there was overall support for updating the ordinance. There was support for having a clear definition of what constitutes a home occupation, given that more and more people are actually working from home, and then a need for increased deliveries, a need for a prohibited uses list. There was some support for, there was support for, you know, not allowing uses that were in the, the neighborhood commercial zone and the business professional zone to be allowed in residential zones. And then they expressed concern about the late-night hours that we currently allow. We allow up to 10 o'clock for business, home-based businesses to be active until 10 o'clock during the week. And there were some, they had some mixed views on retail storefronts and, and on the number of visitors, which again, I'll get to in a second. So what, what staff has done is we've, we've made clear the definition related to home-based businesses. So if you just happen to be working from home, you're not having to, you know, because that's just the new business model for a lot of companies now that you're working from home, you're not having to get a home occupation permit. But if you're doing onsite sales, if you have onsite storage, or if you're having customers come to your home, then you do need a home occupation permit. We developed a list of prohibited uses. As I mentioned, the, that was pared back by the Planning Commission. We increased the number of deliveries. We changed the hours of operation to standardize that from going to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We also mandated that when they apply, they need to provide their state or federal license. So if you're, if you're a certified massage therapist, or if you're a barber, you need to provide a copy of that along with your application. There was an increase in the number of visitors allowed at one time and overall. And then, in addition to that, as I mentioned, the commission increased the number of firearm sales, and with the clarification the council member Aquino mentioned. So we have no limitation right now. Staff had recommended initially two. That was raised to four by the commission. They made, they removed those two items from the prohibited uses list. Staff made, in working with our police department, we made, number one, we codified the fact that it needs to be reviewed and approved by the police department. That's our current practice, but it isn't in the ordinance. Second...
But that's an important distinction here because in speaking to the police chief, my understanding is that, that all of this currently is reviewed, is subject to review by Folsom Police Department. So anytime a gun gets sold, Folsom PD is notified of it.
Yes, that's correct, and we route all of our home occupation permits that involve, that involve firearm sales to the police department. Similarly, if there's any home occupation permit that involves materials that could potentially be hazardous, that's routed to the fire department.
Okay. But I think it's important for people to understand that as it stands right now, and my understanding is that there's only three of these such businesses that sell firearms in Folsom at the moment, and that any sales that are made basically have to go through Folsom PD. So Folsom PD is aware of every gun that's being sold in Folsom?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
In addition, we added very specific requirements regarding the, the operations for anyone who is selling firearms or ammunition from their home. So that includes things like a gun-proof safe, an alarm system with both cameras and voice recording, as well as the ability to inspect the, the residence. The area where there are no changes is ultimately the Planning Commission voted against allowing alterations of the... alterations of the home to make home-based businesses more like a retail business. The reason for that and the concern expressed was that since anyone can have a home-based business, if an entire block had, you know, 10 homes and seven of those homes had home-based businesses, you could have kind of a transformation of that neighborhood into more of a mixed-use environment. There are other currently, other alternatives as well to promote that business rather than having a retail storefront. You know, you can find many of these home-based businesses that are operational here in Folsom simply by going on to the internet. We kept the sign size the same, since we're actually fairly generous when it comes to signs and home-based businesses here in Folsom, but we still do not allow for illumination. And that's in keeping with the change in the hours as well. We, the staff had originally recommended reducing the appeals to one level, but the planning commission kept it at two, and it remains at two levels of appeal in the ordinances before you today. Again, no change to the business area, no change to the number of employees, and no change to the off-street parking requirements. I just wanted to point out, I mentioned this earlier in the presentation, that some of the changes that were made as a result of the planning commission decisions does create some potential inconsistencies. I don't believe it creates any legal concerns, although I'll defer to the city attorney on that, but it does create some inconsistencies. What I mean by that is, in our commercial areas, there are more stricter requirements for, for example, for opening a gun store, or a tattoo parlor, or a manufacturing use than there would be if they were to engage in this as a home-based business. A couple of examples are the 1,000-foot distance requirement from a school that applies to a gun store and the 500-foot boundary away from residences. And then, in the case, for example, of like a tattoo parlor, it's a conditional use permit that's required in most of our zones, and some of zones don't currently allow them at all. So, following the, following the planning commission hearing, we started to get a number of comments regarding this issue. Most were in opposition to a number of the changes, particularly as it relates to firearms and ammunition sales. And then, in addition to that, because this was taken off the, because ammunition sales and reload were taken off of the prohibited uses list, the fire department expressed concern regarding this for two reasons. One, the potential for a large amount of black powder and smokeless powder to be stored at the home associated with business activities, and whether, and the fact that that could create a safety risk. And then, two, the California Fire Code does not allow for, they do allow it for personal use, but they don't allow it for the storage of black powder and smokeless powder at the home for business activity. And then, so those, the initial set of comment letters were included in your attachment, in your staff report as attachment four. Subsequent to the posting of the staff report, we received quite a few additional comment letters. Those are included in the supplement that was provided to you today. I did want to call out that we, thanks to council member Aquino for sharp eyes, we caught a couple of typos that staff had missed in there. So a clean version of the ordinances included in attachment 1A.
Council member Howell, Aquino never misses, never misses a spelling mistake or a typo or grammatical, and she's amazing.
Yes, yeah, she is. It was, no, it was very, it was actually very helpful. I've seen this, read through this so many times that I missed those.
I think you were a teacher in a previous life.
Attachment 2A has the underlined strikeout version, so you can see precisely what was altered. And then, attachment 3A has all the additional comment letters. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. Again, this is the recommendation that's here before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Desmond, if we can roll back to two slides where you have mentioned 1,000 feet from schools and 500, yep. So when we are opening a gun store in a retail store, so those are the regulations. Those are imposed by federal and state.
Yeah, that's correct, and they are included in our zoning code. They come from the Gun Free Schools Act of 1995, and again, that was included in our ordinance. Working with the city attorney, we did review to see whether the Gun Free Schools Act of 1995 would apply to home-based businesses that sell firearms, and based on the review of that, it would not.
Okay, thank you. And in any of those federal or state regulations for this purpose, no mention of residents means they cannot sell or they can sell?
There's no prohibition in the Gun Free Schools Act that I'm aware of that prohibits residents from selling firearms, you know, within a 1,000 feet of the school property.
It's not just the Gun Free Schools Act. In general, the federal regulations or state, you have done so much research.
So gun sellers in California are subject to quite a bit of checks and regulations. So, and the police department can speak to this in more detail, but generally, they have to get a license or a firearm sales certificate, an ammunition sales certificate from the California Department of Justice. Again, there are background checks involved with that and a review of the operation. Similarly, the US Department of, or the US Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, commonly known as ATF, also does similar background checks, and they, you have to get a federal firearms license in order to be able to sell firearms. So in addition to the business license, the home occupation permit license, the department, California Department of Justice certificate, and the US Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, federal firearms license, all of those, they have to have all of those, and they all have to be valid for them to, for them to be able to sell guns. If any of those, any one of those licenses expires, that invalidates the other licenses. And so then, they're prohibited from selling firearms. One of the things that Mayor Howell pointed out is, we currently have three active home-based businesses that sell firearms. We have had no code enforcement complaints, we've had no police complaints with regard to them. Generally, they smell, they sell small quantities of ammunition along with the firearm. And, you know, as you may or may not know, a lot of gun stores sell guns, they don't necessarily do repairs or work on guns, or deal with antique or specialty firearms. That is something that's fairly typical of these home-based businesses or smaller operations with regard to that.
Desmond.
Thank you.
Desmond, how long has the, what is the longest-standing business in home sales of guns?
That's a, that's a good question. I'm not exactly sure. It may be, it may be Smitty's Gunsmith, but I honestly don't know. The, we, he had at one time five licensed operators, but the two of them have ceased operation. So we currently have three.
Do you know how long he's been in business?
You know, I don't. If he's here tonight, maybe he could speak to that. And there's two others, but I don't know how long they've been in operation. I'd have to go back.
I have another question. So there currently have been 100 complaints over five years with home-based businesses. That's about averaging 20, 20 a year-ish?
Yeah, although I have to say, it has increased more recently. So while that is spread over the five years, we see a bit of a bigger uptick in the last few years. Part of that is related to the gig economy, where more people have apps where you can, you know, rent a car, or rent somebody's RV, or, you know, rent their home, or, you know, those kinds of things, where they're, it's a little bit more kind of underground than somebody establishing a true business from their home. So we have had more complaints with regard to those.
So my other question was, we are seeing, are we seeing an uptick in home-based businesses from 2019, pre-pandemic, to say, 2021, when we were getting towards the end of the pandemic? We are seeing an increase in applications?
We have had an increase in the complaints, not a huge increase, but an increase. I don't know for certain whether we've seen a big uptick. Everything that I've read and doing my research suggests that there is a growing trend of people working from home. Some engaged in business, their own businesses, some just simply working from home because their employer has, you know, shrunk their office footprint for safety, you know, for COVID reasons. But I'd have to do a little bit more research to give you.
And it wasn't on the complaints? I was questioning, it was the number of home-based businesses.
Yeah, I was surprised to see that we have about, you know, about 1,000 active home-based businesses in Folsom, more than I was expecting.
Any other questions of staff?
I have a couple of questions, and to answer the vice mayor's question, it looks like one goes back to 2008 and one goes back to 2012. Those will be the oldest. Desmond, just curious, was there a particular reason staff was recommending a limit of two firearms and the planning commission settled on four? I assume there's also, I think I read this somewhere, that state or federal regulation also places limits on the number of firearms that could be sold at one time, or maybe the type of firearms. So how did the planning commission come to recommend four? Do you recall?
There, I think they just felt that two was too low, and they felt that with the other provisions that were in place in the ordinance, the other requirements that were on home-based businesses, they felt that since, they just felt, they felt that two was too low, too restrictive.
And this may be more of a question for the city attorney, but we did receive a call from a resident who was concerned that this was only ever vetted by the planning commission and not the historic district commission. And so I just want to ask the city attorney this question. So if we do keep two appeals, so let's say, for example, somebody who lives in the historic district applies for a home occupation permit, it doesn't matter the nature of the business, it's denied by the community development department, and they want to appeal that. If they live in the historic district commission, does it get appealed to the historic district commission? They live in the historic district. Does it get appealed to the historic district commission or to the planning commission for this particular ordinance?
Thank you, council member Aquino. The answer is, as the proposed ordinance is currently written, the appeal would go to the planning commission, but the city council can also designate a different route, if that's what the city council wished to do.
Okay.
And that's only because this is a citywide ordinance, not a location-specific ordinance.
Okay. And I am going to have some questions for the police chief or maybe sergeant right back there, but I don't know if you want to do those now or later.
Are they kind of brief questions, Sarah?
We can wait, yeah.
Oh, no, part of the reason why I'm asking the question is it might eliminate somebody from asking a question from the public if you can get something clarified in advance.
Okay.
So maybe now is better.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Rick Kilmann, the police chief. I have with me tonight Detective Sergeant Lou Wright.
Or as I call him, Dudley Lou Wright.
Thank you.
Never gets old. You still hate that, though, don't you?
So, under the current ordinance, community development department gets an application, let's say for somebody who wants to have a home-based business selling firearms and/or ammunition. It gets routed to the police department. You review it and sign off on it. Does that include any sort of home visit to that place of business?
Not by us.
Okay. And if we were to adopt the recommendations from the planning commission, but we added that requirement, I know it does, I appreciate the conditions that the police department has recommended about storage and security and all that kind of stuff. And it does say in there that any city, any city employee can inspect those premises with, you know, reasonable notice. But if we were to put some type of condition on there that the premises had to be inspected no less than once per year, so basically, if they're going to renew their permit for another year, it would require an inspection either from your department and/or code enforcement. Is that, is that something that would be doable?
Yes, yes, we could do that. Detective Sergeant Wright contacted the Department of Justice and found out their conditions as well and their inspection period. So if that's of interest to you, they are required to inspect every three years, I believe. But I'll let him speak to that.
Thank you. Speaking with California DOJ, they currently try to inspect firearms licensees within the state once every three years. Currently, there is no requirement for how often they are inspected at the state level.
So PD may not inspect, but does the fire department inspect? Because they inspect other.
They don't, the fire department doesn't inspect home-based businesses.
But they do inspect commercial businesses.
Commercial, not home-based.
There is no fire department inspection for this purpose right now.
Any other questions of PD?
Is, maybe the code enforcement is going to their house and inspecting, if not PD?
I believe that that's what the chief said, yes.
Sorry, I missed that.
That, no one right now.
No, no one from the city is inspecting, neither PD nor code.
Code enforcement is not doing that at this moment.
Thank you.
But that's, that's a point for discussion.
Point for discussion.
I think council member Aquino is raising that could be a possibility, and that could lie in either, in my mind, in either police or code.
Okay. If we have no other questions of the council for staff, then we will open the public hearing. And I'm just going to remind everybody, maximum three minutes, and no one will be offended if somebody that spoke before you has exactly the same opinion. You can feel free to say ditto, or I agree with the previous speaker, or anything to speed this along a little bit. Again, because we have 30 requests to speak, so that is a minimum of 90 minutes from now.
Okay, we'll announce the next speaker and the next two, so you can be ready. The first speaker tonight will be Jennifer Jacobs. Jennifer will be followed by William Saboda, let me know if I said that wrong, who will be followed by Rory Hanley. And you'll notice there's a little speaker timer on the right corner of that podium. And when the light turns yellow, you know you have 30 seconds left. So go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Jacobs. Welcome to my first city council speaking event. I am a 21-year resident of Folsom, and I'm also a small business owner. I am a child and adolescent psychologist, and I rent office space in Folsom for my business. And this is something that I think is really key in terms of all of these proposals, not necessarily in terms of the gun legislation, but the fact that we have a lot of office space that is available, commercial office space, that is zoned for offices and for businesses. And I feel very strongly that if you want to have a store, particularly to sell guns and ammunition, you should rent space and open a store. And that's fine, we have gun stores here. But I don't believe that it should be allowed in residential areas. Absolutely. I'm very concerned that there is no other city nearby that allows for residential gun sales. And so, word gets out pretty quickly, hey, all you have to do is rent an apartment in Folsom, you can, you can sell guns, you can, you know, sell ammunition out of your apartment. That's, and nowhere else in Sacramento can you do that. That's very, very concerning to me. I believe it will become a magnet. I am also concerned about housing values, and the danger to this is hard to ignore. If I am aware that one of my neighbors has a gun store out of their home, I have to disclose this. this when I am selling my house. And I personally would never buy a house near a gun store. That's why I live in a residential area and not in a commercial business zone. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be William Sabada, who will be followed by Rory Hanley, who will be followed by Heather Hanley.
Uh, thank you very much for hearing me out. I understand her concerns, Ms. Jacobs. And I read her neighborhood watch where she was talking about the guns in Folsom as far as gun shops. If she could tell me where there is a gun shop, I would really appreciate it because there isn't any gun shop in Folsom. And as far as how many people have permits to sell guns out of their home, it's what, 10 or 11?
No, it's three.
Three. Okay. I don't think that's really a big issue. And I think he made a statement about guns being sold or traded in the parking lot. Did I hear you say that correct? Or am I hearing bad? Did you say guns were being traded?
If, if we could get you to direct your comments to the city council through the microphone, because we're being, we're on TV and we need to get your comments on record.
So I've been reading some of the people writing in to you guys and it's, they're really upset. All right, I feel sorry for you guys. How dare you do this? They talk about gunfights in the streets and everything. This ain't the Wild West. This is Folsom, California. Our law enforcement is probably the top in the nation. Me personally, I, I was a law enforcement officer 30-plus years. The thing about it is people get misinformed when it comes to gun sales. The only gun shop local is across the street, the bridge in Orangeville, and it's Nick's Gun Shop and it belongs to Orangeville Arms. The thing about it is, is you have to go in there and show your ID cards, you have to show proper identification, you have to make sure you're not a felon to get a gun. They don't sell ghost guns, they don't sell guns to felons. The thing is, people don't understand that the people that are killing people are criminals, criminals that need to be kept in prison, okay? So if we can focus on keeping people locked up.
If we could stop this stuff in the background and please address your comments to the council.
All right. And I really appreciate the work we've done and I really appreciate my time. But like I said, there's a lot of misinformation about guns. Criminals are the ones that are killing people left and right and we need to just take care of the criminals. Honest law-abiding citizens, Second Amendment is great to have. People in Ukraine wish they had the Second Amendment right now and they wish they had gun shops. Thank you.
Next will be Rory Hanley, who will be followed by Heather Hanley, who will then be followed by Khalid Abu Taleb. I apologize if I pronounced that wrong.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rory Hanley. I've been a resident in Folsom for seven years. I love the city. I'm a proud member of the Folsom chapter of the California Rifle and Pistol Association. I'm an avid hunter, I'm a recreational shooter, and this is a topic that I'm very passionate about. And while I understand how people have concerns about firearms, I'd like to just bring this up that, you know, the Second Amendment, the right of the people to keep and bear arms is not up for debate tonight. So whether or not you agree with it, your fellow, fellow residents of Folsom have that right to keep and bear arms as well. And in order for a business to do, or in, in order for anyone to do business involving firearms, that individual must get an FFL, which is a federal firearms license, and undergo a lot of scrutiny compared to the average citizen gun owner. And these business owners are both regulated by the ATF and the DOJ and go through rigorous background checks, inspections and regulations. Now, there've already been additional restrictions prohibiting reloading ammunition sales that are being proposed. And what I noticed up here is, of, of the hundreds of complaints that have been filed in the last few years, I didn't see a single one involving firearms. And matter of fact, I don't think anybody in this room, other than the ones who know about guns, even knew that there'd been gun shops opened up for the last 10 years. So I think it's incredibly important for law-abiding citizens to continue to do business in the city of Folsom. I emphasize continue because these guys have been around since 2008, 2012, and there's been no issues whatsoever. It's not like people are just opening up gun shops in their garage and whipping out AK-47s or something. And I think the most important thing about this, because I know there's a lot of people opposed to firearms and I totally understand that, but I think the really most important part about this, because we do have Folsom business owners running businesses out of their homes, is now that the pandemic is over, I think the last thing the city should be focused on is shutting down businesses. Thank you.
Next will be Heather Hanley, who will be followed by Khalid Abu Taleb, who will then be followed by James Ensor. So go ahead, Heather.
Hi. Hello, City Council. My name is Heather Hanley. I've been a Folsom resident for seven years. Supporters of the Second Amendment are a community of law-abiding citizens who have a desire to prepare for, or to be prepared for any situation. As far as local businesses who sell firearms or ammunition from their homes, I want to line out the very strict process they must go through in order to be eligible to have their business through a federal firearms license or FFL. They must submit their personal information to the ATF, which is the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms, including medical records to ensure they are mentally sound. They must submit a passport quality photograph and their fingerprints. They go through a background check by the Federal Firearms Licensing Center. They must do an, an interview with an industry operations investigator. All of this information is then reviewed by a panel and if all paperwork, background checks, interviews, fingerprints pass, on second inspection, the FFL is granted. This is a costly and stringent process through the ATF. I want to line out the process to ensure you that an FFL holder is a responsible citizen who has given up their privacy to the federal government to be able to have a firearms business. This is not a one-time process and reapplication must be submitted every three years and the FFL holder must maintain a clean record. An FFL holder is an upstanding citizen. Not only does an FFL holder have to meet federal requirements, but they must also meet some of the strictest requirements in the country with California gun laws. Buyers cannot simply purchase a firearm and walk out with one the same day. To purchase a firearm, the purchaser must pass a test or receive a firearm safety certificate, which is good for five years. The purchaser must pass a background check on every transaction and there's a 10-day waiting period before the purchaser can gain possession of their purchased firearm. There are now background checks to buy ammunition as well. Purchased firearms must be locked and kept in a case to be transported. I want to ease fears that people are going to be walking up and buying boxes of guns as this is simply not the case. California only allows the purchase of one pistol or rifle a month. Purchasers must be law-abiding citizens that pass California's background check and firearms are required to be transported in a case in a safe manner. Our 2A community is all about safety and responsibility. Please don't let misconceptions or personal preference and dislike of the industry stop law-abiding FFL holders from making a living in Folsom. The customers of these businesses are also law-abiding citizens. Criminals are not using an FFL to purchase guns. Criminals are getting guns through black market and criminal transactions. These FFL holders have existed in Folsom without incident and Folsom remains one of the safest places to live in California. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next will be Khalid Abu Taleb, and please correct me. Next will be James Ensor, who will be followed by Peggy Blair.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Khalid Abu Taleb.
If you could move that microphone just a little bit.
My name is Khalid Abu Taleb. I've been living in Folsom for about six years. I'm a father for three young daughters and a pharmacist in our community. I'm actually here today to just speak or oppose the conversion of the house next to my door, next-door house, located in 130 Prospector Court to a drug and alcohol rehab center. I actually share a wall, I share like a common driveway with that house. And as I said, I have three, three daughters and my wife. My kids are homeschooled in the house every day. I did work actually in a previous location before that was next to rehab center, but that wasn't a commercial zoning. So I know the kind of traffic that bring to the, whatever area that located in. I don't feel safe for my family having this house converted next door to such a facility. I mean, it's, it just, don't have a peace of mind letting my, my daughter playing in the street, any of the kids playing in the street. In fact, in the last months alone, the amount of disruption that I had from the workers going in and out, having people knocking on my door because they confused the house from the house next door. I have neighbor complain about car driving very fast across the street. This is a cul-de-sac and that house located at the end of cul-de-sac, so everybody in the neighborhood will be affected by the increased traffic, that kind of traffic bringing it to that street. Thank you, that's all what I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, next will be James Ensor, who will be followed by Peggy Blair, and Peggy will be followed by Leah Shering.
Hello, thank you. Appreciate your time tonight. I'm here for the same, how, same reason the gentleman before me was, we're concerned about this place being converted into a drug rehab, alcohol rehab. You know, I'm looking up terms and like the home occupational thing, all I keep reading is like the owner's gonna, supposed to be there. As far as I can tell, there's gonna be nobody, the owner won't be there. The doctor might be there part of the time, but the term doesn't fit what's going, gonna happen. And I don't know, have we, have we actually given a permit? I'm kind of confused because we've got so little information on, on what's going on in, in our own neighborhood. Do we, anybody know if we've actually given them a permit or not?
Maybe I could ask our Community Development Director Pam Johns to comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. This is actually not something that is considered a home-based business. This is a licensed group home or care facility, which is something that's regulated by the state. So as long as there are six or fewer residents, they qualify and they get the license in the state, the only thing they get from the city of Folsom is a business license. They put in an application at this address for a business license on Friday. It has not yet been issued, but it's a, what we call a ministerial review in that we're just confirming that they have the required licensing and information. But it is something we can provide information about the state licensing requirements and the contact. The state also monitors the operations and takes in any complaints or concerns that someone has about the operation of the facility. But it isn't something that the city has local control over so long as it's six or fewer residents that meet the qualifications of and definition in the state of group home. So home occupation is not the definition of, of what you're describing in that address.
That's what, that's what we were led to, led to believe. Like I said, there's been so little information that we've been getting, now we find out there's employees working in this canyon and nobody knew, so.
And I'd be happy to provide.
We're all trying to get information. I mean, we're really kind of a little, a little upset because we haven't got any information about this. We're in a cul-de-sac and there's no parking. I don't know these, so I've, I have experience with family and friends that have gone through these programs. They park, the residents that come in, they park on the street, their car, and then they go to their program and they stay there. And there's no, there's no, there's no car parking, there's no, the streets will be lined with cars that don't belong to any of us. And, and that's not, that's, that's not functional and you wouldn't, you shouldn't, we shouldn't be able to put a facility like this at the back of a cul-de-sac. We, we, we get, we buy a cul-de-sac to get away from the traffic and not have, have all that process and to be a little quieter, where our kids can play and have a good time and not have to worry about this. So I don't know where we can take this to get more information or what we can do to change this, but.
I think, I think maybe the best way to handle this would be for you to have a separate conversation with the Community Development Department. And one thing that, that I will start with is that the, the first person who spoke earlier tonight in business from the floor on this matter, part of the problem is this was a change in state law several years ago. We really have no ability to force them to go somewhere else.
So you have no?
It's a, it's a state law that, that limits it to a maximum of six and we basically have no control over it.
I, I can provide follow-up information. My, my contact information is on the city's website, Pam Johns, Community Development Director, and I'd be happy to share information about what the requirements are, who to contact to identify who the operator is and get an understanding of what's being planned and then to, you know, log any concerns or, you know, complaints as, as things, you know, move forward. So I would be happy to provide all of that information to anyone who's here on that item.
They're asking if you would meet with them.
Yes, I, I would, yes, please reach out to me and I'll set that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Peggy Blair. Peggy will be followed by Leah Shering and Leah will be followed by Jamie Baker.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Peggy Blair. I've been a member, a resident of the city of Folsom for about 15, 16 years, moved here from Sacramento. And I think I'm going to be in District Five come, after you adopt the ordinance. I'm, I'm truly astonished that the Planning Commission and the city council has proposed this expansion of gun sales to home residences. It's really frightening to me that this would be considered by your body. I, I looked toward Folsom as a family-friendly place and I would like it to stay that way. And to think of gun sales occurring in my neighborhood next door when my grandchildren come to play is really frightening to me. And I'm truly astonished that there hasn't been more uprising and concern about this and that there hasn't been more publishing of media coverage and city coverage of what this home ordinance, home occupation ordinance would do. I, I vehemently oppose this ordinance and I encourage all of you to vote no on it.
Our next speaker will be Leah Shering. Leah will be followed by Jamie Baker, who will be followed by Sherri Berry.
All right. Good evening, City Council. My name is Leah Shering and I've lived in Folsom for the past 18 years and I've been grateful to settle here with my children and my family in this friendly, safe town. Allowing gun and ammunition sales in our neighborhoods simply does not match up with our suburban community. I have spoken to many residents and they were all appalled to hear that this is currently being allowed and could potentially be in their own neighborhood someday. There are so many safety concerns about proximity to schools, daycares, homeschools, kids playing out front, a greater risk to those homes being targeted for break-ins. One of my neighbors was just recently broken into, their safe was stolen. I'm grateful it wasn't full of guns. You don't even have restrictions on the type of guns that can be allowed. And the sales from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, I checked with the ammo depot in Rancho Cordova, those are longer hours than even they have. To quote your own webpage, the city of Folsom, the Folsom City Council is dedicated to ensuring Folsom's high standards for public health, safety and quality of life. No other nearby cities allow this as it drastically alters the character of our neighborhoods and is an enormous security and liability issue. I see that you don't allow the sale of cigarettes or alcohol, which makes sense, so why would you allow guns and ammunition sales as well as reloading as it adds a potential for fire risk? If you are so set on not upsetting the three current gun shop owners, then grandfather them in and end this, okay? Grandfather them in, let them continue and don't allow more. I mean, you're gonna upset either three gun owners or lots of voters in your community that are gonna have to reelect you in the future. This is not a Second Amendment issue or even a political party issue. This isn't about whether an individual can own a gun or buy a gun. Somebody was saying there aren't shops in Folsom, then get a storefront and open one up. And we have many empty storefronts in our community. You could grandfather those people in, they could fill those empty storefronts. Most of the people I was, talked to just did not want a gun shop next to their home. Nobody did. A lot of them had concerns even just about other businesses and increased parking and people coming till 8:00 PM, even though that's being lowered from 10 to 8, that's still pretty late. But generally, I would love to see a show of hands from our city council. Would you be happy if there was a gun shop moving in next door to you? You're probably not gonna raise your hands either way, but I really doubt it. Nobody's gonna, we're moving here, our home prices are through the roof, nobody's moving to the suburbs where houses cost 600 plus to live next to people selling guns. They belong in business centers away from our residents, away from our children, that's where they belong. Nobody's stopping them from opening a storefront or doing what Desmond suggested about where they handle the business at home and do the transactions and all that takes place off-site. Maybe not in a parking lot, that doesn't sound safe for them or for the customers, but through the mail or other things like that. I really ask that you move guns and ammunition sales to the prohibited list. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Jamie Baker. Jamie will be followed by Sherri Berry, who will be followed by Gail Back.
Thank you for hearing me. My name's Jamie Baker, I've lived in the city of Folsom for nineteen years. I apologize, I'm mildly upset right now, because I also live on Prospector Court, and I work with these kinda people who have to go through this. They sit around in the courtyard, they smoke cigarettes, they wander around, they case the place. Now, I realize that you people did not have to approve that under City Ordinance, I know that now, I did not know that before I came in here. This is wrong, and if anybody knew this ahead of time, they should have notified the people on that street and that neighborhood what was going on. Like it or not, you can talk about addicts being, having a disease, the bottom line, they get up to no good. They do. Very short success rate on, you know, recovery from addiction, and it's just bad business for a neighborhood. We have small children. I personally don't have children. The guy across the street's got two wonderful little kids, the guy down the street's got three wonderful little kids. They don't need to be around this element at all. It's gonna bring our property values down, and it's a problem. Anyway, that's all I have to say, and remember, guns don't kill people, people kill people.
Our next speaker will be Sherri Berry. Sherri will be followed by Gail Back, and Gail will be followed by Cheryl Davis.
Can I move it down? Kinda short. Hi, my name is Sherri Berry, and I'm a credentialed teacher, and I own a state licensed daycare called the Berry Patch Preschool here in Folsom. I am proud to say I have been in business for twenty-one years, working hard to take care of Folsom's little kids. I love my job, but I do have a few concerns as a business owner about the current laws regarding gun sales in Folsom, and I feel like these issues must be considered. I tried to look up the exact number, but I believe there's over thirty home daycares and preschools in Folsom. And as part of that group, I would be concerned if someone was selling guns next door to where I teach. I believe this would have a negative impact on my business, and I know that if students' parents found out, it would concern them as well. I also have the question of, will I as a business owner, especially with little kids at my house every day, be, will I be told that someone's selling guns next to my house? Also, I just wanna make you aware, the Fire Department does visit my business, and they are required to. The Folsom Fire Department does visit my business, and, as well as state licensing. In nineteen ninety-five, the Gun Free Zone Act was passed. This act states that guns cannot come within a thousand feet of public or private school. That law does not apply to home daycares, but there is a reason why, why it exists, and why we don't want guns near schools, and that's to keep children safe. How are children under five any different? We wanna keep our children safe, especially in our neighborhood homes and home daycares. That being said, can you guarantee my students will be safe with this ordinance continuing to exist? And there's a lot of us taking care of a lot of kids in Folsom, in neighborhoods. I appreciate the fact there are three people selling guns, and they have been doing it safely, and I'm really thankful to them for doing that safely. But I think that they can be grandfathered in and continue to operate, and stop any further businesses from opening. Remington was just successfully sued for seventy-three million dollars as a result of Sandy Hook, and the law only helps victims after something goes south. We need to cut the source of the problem before the tragedy. Folsom is the only city in Sacramento that allows home gun sales, and it's been going on for twenty-five years. But I think that times have changed, and so should we. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Gail Back. Gail will be followed by Cheryl Davis, and Cheryl will be followed by Rosemary Yoshikawa.
Hi, good evening, City Council members. My name is Gail Back, and I'm a Folsom resident, and I'm also a Folsom business owner. I've had a business here for fourteen years. I'm here tonight to express my strong feelings that any future home-based sales of guns and ammunition be prohibited. And I second some of the other speakers who have recommended grandfathering, I definitely support that. Rather than granting additional business licenses for operations onsite in residential homes, I encourage the council to allow these businesses to operate in commercial retail spaces, where they can be protected by commercial liability insurance policies, commercial alarm and security monitoring systems, and security patrols. It is my great hope that the city of Folsom works to become more in line with our neighboring jurisdictions as it relates to this zoning code. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Cheryl Davis. Cheryl will be followed by Rosemary Yoshikawa, who will be followed by William Davis.
Good evening again, my name is Cheryl Davis. Tonight I urge you to place the sale, manufacture of firearms and ammunition on the prohibited list for home occupation permits. I wanted to address three points that have been raised in various email responses from council persons. The first was, but they've always been allowed. Yes, but we used to be allowed to smoke in restaurants, and probably in this very building, but this council took action in passing ordinance prohibiting indoor and outdoor smoking for the health of Folsom residents. And it seems like in the staff recommendation, your, the recommendation is to take home kennels off and prohibit them for home sales, so you, you can take that type of action. I ask you, so I ask you again tonight, to act on behalf of the health and safety of our, of our city. Number two, it appears that all nearby cities and counties don't prohibit. So I checked adjoining cities and counties, but I didn't need to. Your staff did this nifty succinct table on page one oh five of your packet that confirms what I found, that Folsom is the only jurisdiction in the region to allow this. That is not a distinction that we should have. The third is, my guess is gun sellers are collectors and sportsmen, so again, I checked. So per ATF, Folsom has seven licensees to sell and manufacture firearms. Four are commercial businesses, and three are home-based. Of the three home sellers, one has had four violations with the ATF. Failure to keep record of inventory, having more firearms on premises than reported. Failure to list the type and number of firearms transferred to the buyer. Failure to transmit the buyer's information to the National Institute of Criminal Background Checks. Last year alone, three hundred thousand people across the country were denied approval to buy a firearm. Forty-two percent of those were felons. And then finally, failure to get the buyer's signature on the required ATF form. That was frightening for me. I shared this information with your community development staff, they were unaware of the violations. It sounds like PD knows when, your Folsom Police Department knows when a gun is purchased. I don't know if they were aware of these violations. There are no issues with the second seller, but ATF apparently only has the staff to be able to monitor once every seven years. The third is licensed by you and ATF to manufacture firearms. His home is in Empire Ranch, where it is a violation of CCNRs to have a home business. A review of his website shows the sale of high-capacity weapons, assault weapons, ranging from two to ten thousand dollars. You're considering changes to allow up to four weapons per customer, ten customers per day. At a max, that means forty assault weapons would be traveling through Empire Ranch each day. But it sounds like there isn't a limit now, so more may be traveling through our neighborhood as we speak. Their company motto is, "We are a team of passionate people whose goal is to improve everyone's life through disruptive products." Why would we want self-proclaimed disruptive products in our neighborhood? I know I don't.
I need you to wrap up.
Yep. It's not about the licensing, I understand all the provisions, it's about the location and keeping our city safe and friendly. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Rosemary Yoshikawa, who will be followed by William Davis, and William will be followed by Teresa Cooper.
Thank you, my name is Rosemary Yoshikawa, and I have to say, most of what I was going to talk about Cheryl covered, so I totally agree with what Cheryl said. And the one point I wanted to make is that, yes, when a gun dealer sells guns, the police need to approve that, but to Cheryl's point that she brought out, that information is dependent on the integrity of the gun seller. And there are very strict regulations, I understand that frankly, it's, it's, I don't think it's an easy job to sell guns by all those regulations. But the police will need to be depend on the seller's integrity, his records, his accuracy, his, his neatness, his, his ability to keep his business organized. So, if this new ordinance, that is generous, and that is flexible, that can look very attractive to gun dealers because there's so many restrictions, or there's no opportunity in the other areas surrounding, we could see, I think it's very possible, we could see more gun dealers. And these dealers need to have integrity, but when they have violations, and they are non-inspected on any type of very frequent basis, it, it could be very dangerous. So, again, guns and firearms and reloading and ammunition is a very different product from the other businesses where people have catering or daycare or sell jewelry, and I think that needs to be distinguished. I hope you will do the right thing and prohibit firearms and ammo from home-based sales. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is William Davis. William will be followed by Teresa Cooper, who will be followed by Cassandra Whitstone.
So Bill Davis is my better half, but we have grandchildren tonight, so we had to go home to put them to bed. Can I read his comments, or I don't know what the point of order is?
Yes, please do.
Okay. "Good evening, my name is Bill Davis, and I'm a longtime resident of Folsom. I'm asking you to put the sale, manufacture of firearms and ammunition on the prohibited list for home occupation permits. My biggest concern is the safety of our neighborhoods. A few years ago, the local gun store was robbed. It was a smash and grab, thieves ramming a car through the storefront and stealing two dozen handguns. ATF found the suspects in Oakland. We all know that there will always be the criminal element that will want guns and ammunition to commit their crimes, or sell on the black market to fund their criminal lifestyles. If thieves attempted to get them by doing a smash and grab at a storefront gun dealership on a, one of the busiest roads, or busiest streets in Folsom, why wouldn't they consider illegally entering a house, apartment, or condo in a less visible, less protected neighborhood? I live in a house that was built by Elliott Homes. You can find at least five other homes on our street that look just like ours. Consider the risk of these criminals getting the wrong house when they mistakenly think you have guns and ammunition they want. This is a life-threatening experience I nor my family want to have. Please do not allow guns and ammunition to be sold in Folsom residential neighborhoods." Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Tressa Cooper. Okay, sorry, I've been saying that, Teresa, so Tressa Cooper, followed by Cassandra Whitstone, who will be followed by Ruth Anderson. So go ahead.
Hi, so I'm not good at public speaking, so I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. I just wanna encourage you to move guns and ammunition to the prohibited list. I bought my house in Folsom for a safe, quiet neighborhood, and I'd like it to stay that way. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Cassandra Whitstone. Cassandra will be followed by Ruth Anderson, who will then be followed by, looks like Donna McGurley. Okay.
Hi, my name's Cassandra Whitstone, and I'm a longtime resident of Folsom. I'm gonna do the short version, because a lot of my points have been covered, but according to the proposed changes, Folsom would now allow residential gun sellers to do ammunition manufacturing and reloading. I reached out to the Folsom Fire Chief Cusano and spoke to him on January tenth. He told me that allowing gun sellers to do this as a home-based business is indeed a fire risk, and explained why that is. In the current packet prepared for us by the city's staff, it says, and forgive me for reading this to you, but "On the topic of ammunition manufacture and reload, this is not allowed currently, given the hazards associated with the storage of black powder and smokeless powder. This is consistent with that of other jurisdictions in our region. However, the recent change to the ordinance would now allow home-based businesses involved in this type of activity. After learning of this change, the city's Fire Department has expressed safety concerns about ammunition manufacture and reload activities at home-based businesses. I live in the American River Canyon North neighborhood of Folsom, and the biggest risk to my family and to my neighbors is fire. Wildfires are the only reason why we have ever really considered moving out of the area. We've chosen to stay, and that's in large part because I'm comforted by the fact that I trust that our city and my neighbors are doing an effective job of mitigating the risk of fire. Why would the city of Folsom side with benefiting residential gun sellers instead of erring on the side of our safety? It seems like adding this to home businesses, especially with the documented concerns from the city's own Fire Department, only increases the city of Folsom's liability and risk. I'm hoping that this is a misunderstanding on the part of the Planning Commission, and that this, along with home business gun and ammunition sales in general, will be moved to the prohibited list, and I agree that we should grandfather in the existing gun sellers. Thank you."
Okay, our next speaker will be Ruth Anderson. Ruth will be followed by Donna McGurley, and Donna will be followed by Bruce Klein.
Good evening, I am Ruth Anderson, and I'm a very proud member of Folsom, the community, and an excited voter, and I've learned a lot here tonight, and I think it's been, I'm not gonna repeat things that were said already, but I certainly support prohibiting gun sales from homes. Our neighborhood is a very, filled with young couples with kids that walk to school, ride their bikes, my husband and I take walks after dinner, we feel safe. Actually, friends have teased me about living in wholesome Folsom, and I'm very proud of that. I, I'd like it to stay that way, and I know that once we see different cars and different people coming, we may not share lunchtimes together, but we kinda know who's coming and who's going, and we would be afraid. I know I would be afraid. And if the time came, and it will, when Steve and I will leave our home and move to maybe a smaller residence, I will have to tell our realtor about the gun sales that are going on, and it's not gonna help with the sale of my home. So, safety, the wholesomeness, and the reasons why many of us have chosen to live in Folsom, please preserve that by prohibiting gun sales at homes. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Donna McGurley. Donna will be followed by Bruce Klein, followed by Bruce Klein reading Roger Smith.
Hi, my name is Donna McGuire, and I think I've sent all of you an email message about how I feel about this ammunition and gun business that seems to be the biggest issue here so far tonight. And all these other people, kind people that have spoken, have just, I would be repeating everything that they've said. So I am here to support moving the residential gun and ammunition sales to the prohibited list. Thank you.
All right, next will be Bruce Klein, who will also then speak for Roger Smith. Roger will be followed by Loretta Hedinger.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the City Council. I applaud the public vetting that the Planning Commission did and the city did on this ordinance. I really think this is a good model to get information out so people can express their views. I do support this ordinance, and I think that this is an essential way to go. Home occupation businesses like this have been in place for over twenty-five years. As Desmond mentioned, and when I called him, thank you for answering my call, I asked him, have there been one, has there been one issue, one crime, one issue associated with the home-based firearm business? The answer is no. And for twenty-five years, we've had this ordinance in place, and not one issue from the Police Department, nor one issue from the Fire Department. These, as some of the speakers alluded to earlier, home occupation businesses have to have federal firearms license, they have to be licensed by the state, a state that has the most restrictive firearm licensing and gun requirements in the United States. When we deal with home occupation businesses, the issues always have been traffic, neighborhood disruption, et cetera. It's never been this sort of geopolitical issue about whether guns are good, guns are bad. Guns are legal, our sellers are, I, I don't know about Ms. Davis's information, if Ms. Davis's information is correct, then that firearm dealer ought to be dealt with by the federal licensing agents- federal licensing agency, and that license should be revoked. The city's ordinance has provisions in it that they can revoke a license if there are problems with it. The two licensees that I know of, one is an active police officer, and the other is a man named Roger Smith, and I'll speak to Rogers in a little bit. But these, these small businesses serve a very, very important purpose. We do not have gun stores in Folsom, unlike an earlier speaker said, but I've gone to many of these types of businesses for use for firearms that I've dealt with, gone out of the city. Coincidentally, I've lived in the same neighborhood for nearly 30 years, and there is a gun, licensed gun dealer in my neighborhood, not more than 10 houses away. I'm an avid sportsman, an avid gun owner. I never even knew Roger Smith's business existed, and I suspect that no other people in our neighborhood know that he exists. He's a good, law-abiding person with all these federal licenses. Why are these businesses important? The big boxes like Sportsman's Warehouse, Bass Pro, they don't deal with the kinds of firearms that a collector might want to have. You inherit grandpa or grandma's firearms, and you want to transfer those off, you go to a home oc business, and Roger Smith will find a potential purchaser for those firearms, put those two together, and the FFL is able to transfer it off. Similar with ammo. If you go to Bass Pro today, you might wait hours in line just to-
Transfer to Roger Smith quickly.
Okay, thank you. You might wait hours in line just to get to-
Bruce's time is almost up. You're into Roger's time now.
Thank you. Same with ammo. There is no fire risk associated with ammunition. I'm sure Chief Cusano will address that. Your ordinance already addresses the issues with respect to explosives, whether, and I've spoke to Chief Cusano, could be reloading or the primers, et cetera. The people here don't sell those types of items. So I do urge you to adopt the ordinance, but I do, and I'll speak to Mr. Smith in two seconds. But I also think you need to recognize that this alarm situation, if you're going to require an alarm, then, and that seller does not have the exact type of alarm that you're having today, you need to give that person a grace period to be able to get that alarm up to speed. Now I'll transfer to Mr. Smith if I could. Oops. Please don't make me have to call on Lydia.
Yeah, she should be right there.
Ha, there we go.
All right, your three minutes are starting.
Thank you. So Roger Smith asked me to read this letter. Dear Mayor, Members of the Council, I have a city license with Folsom for my firearms business since August 2012. I hold federal firearms license, and I'm also licensed by the state. In a few days, I'm going to be going to the hospital to repair damage to my neck and back, and at this time, I am currently in a lot of pain, taking medications, so I asked Bruce Klein to read this letter for me. I'm also an above-the-knee amputee who uses an electric wheelchair to get around. I've included pictures of my shop, and... There is Mr. Smith, sitting in his detached, his detached structure which is permitted by the city. When someone I know calls me and tells me they want a specific firearm, I see if I can locate one that they are wanting to purchase. I have a client, fill out the paperwork, it goes to the state system, I don't enter it into the cell system until I find the actual firearm. At that time, I generally know the person spying the firearm. I've never had anyone who has not approved to purchase a firearm. In order to get, to visit my home oc business, a person must make an appointment. My shop, my safe, my working area are all in this detached structure. Due to medical conditions in my family, I do not want customers coming into my home, and all of my business is done in my detached shop area. It is locked, and it is alarmed. Since my shop is detached, does that mean I do not comply with the current ordinance? And the answer, I think in my reading, is yes. I have a license, I've had a license issued by the city for over 10 years, and I've made quite an investment, including a very large and heavy safe. There's the side of his business, there's the back of his business, there's his safe which does comply with the requirements of the code. Recently, ATF sent out, sent out a letter saying that firearms dealers, firearm sales could be done out of, outside of your place of business due to COVID. If my shop is not approved, are you wanting me to conduct firearm sales in my front yard or on my porch? I cannot allow anyone into my home due to the medical condition of my daughter and my wife. I use a ring system for my alarm, and I believe that that's sufficient to meet the requirements, given that I have a safe which is bolted down. However, if I am required to get a commercial alarm system, I understand that could cost between $2,500 and $4,000, and I have, and also a monthly monitoring fee. I would like to keep my existing system, and I would have it reviewed by the police department. Installing a security system at this time is not possible due to my medical condition and that of my family, and I would be happy to provide that to you in writing. But I would like time to comply, and I would ask for six months if a commercial license or commercial alarm is required. Thank you for your time. Roger Smith, owner, Smithy's Gunsmen.
Thank you, Roger.
Okay, our next speaker will be Loretta Hettinger. Loretta will be followed by Mark Saban, and Mark will be followed by Tim McMahon.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Loretta Hettinger, Vice President of the Heritage Preservation League. A person's home is their refuge from the stresses of the day. It's totally appropriate to take into consideration the pandemic-inspired changes in where people work, but we can't lose sight of the basic purpose of a home as sanctuary. This ordinance isn't quite ready for your action. It needs to go to the Historic District Commission for their recommendation, as its effects on the historic district's neighborhoods need to be considered. As you know, the historic district is a unique part of Folsom. Every other neighborhood has curvilinear streets designed to keep out through traffic. The historic district has grid streets that let cut-through traffic generated by Sutter Street and Two River Crossings into the neighborhoods. Historic district residents tolerate commercial impacts and accept that their refuge will not be as peaceful as homes in other subdivisions. However, the same sort of commercialization acceptable to be added in Briggs Ranch or Broadstone could easily become the tipping factor in the historic district neighborhood's tolerance for commercial impacts on their refuge. The example I give is Figaroa Street, and the provision that allows for four customers at a time from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There's already a parking problem on Figaroa Street that the city is trying to address with the pilot program of residential parking permits. How many guest permits can be issued before you recreate the existing problem of too many cars in a finite space? I don't know the answer, but the Historic District Commission should have the opportunity to explore the issue for you and advise you on this and any other issues unique to this unique area. This ordinance brings to light the city's need for better language regarding the Historic District Commission's role. There's no consistency now in how it is interpreted by staff of various departments, and these various interpretations differ widely from how the ordinance was interpreted and enforced for 20 years. The city attorney and I have discussed the problem, and we agree that the solution is clearer language. That's a future discussion, however, probably best addressed as part of the zoning code update that is already in process. For now, it would be enough to just refer this ordinance to the Historic District Commission for their review and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Mark Saban. Mark will be followed by Tim McMahon, and Tim will be followed by Leslie Lindgren.
My name's Mark Saban. I'm a lifelong gun owner, user, trainer, and advocate for the safe gun ownership, for safe gun ownership. There are many laws on the books concerning guns. My only concern is that there is adequate oversight and enforcement of the laws. If you wait for a complaint, it's just a little bit late. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Okay, next, next will be Tim McMahon. Tim will be followed by Leslie Lindgren, who will be followed by Jennifer Hegeman.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, California regulates firearms and ammunition precursor parts more heavily probably than any other state. There are currently between 800 and 900 gun laws on the books, so trying to regulate at the local level will result in a high probability of conflict and/or redundancy. The California Constitution explicitly notes that a county or city must take care not to fall in conflict with general laws. Governor Brown, in one of his veto messages, stated that the state of California has among the strictest gun laws in the country. Allowing individual cities to enact their own more restrictive firearms regulations will sow confusion and uncertainty. So in this draft ordinance, there are some conflicts and redundancies. The part about limiting firearm sales to an individual of four per day or per meeting is preempted by PC 27535A, which states that you can only purchase one firearm a month. The reporting requirements for theft, that conflicts with PC 26885. I won't read that to you in the interest of time. In terms of storage requirements, that conflicts with PC 26890, which offers three methods of storage. And so I would say that the ordinance would be better off just to state that the home-based FFLs shall follow existing state and federal laws. In addition, I'm not aware of any issues of any of the three home-based FFLs in the city, nor in the state for that matter, which, all of these are very low-volume operations, so I don't know why the ordinance is singling out these businesses to begin with. On the subject of ammo, it's innocuous in a fire. The cartridges separate, but don't cause any damage as there's no pressure. It's important to distinguish between black powder and smokeless powder. Black powder is explosive, smokeless powder is, and black powder was used in muskets and flintlock things back in the day. Modern ammunition, what's used today, is smokeless powder, which just burns rapidly. The energy density of gasoline is 47 megajoules per kilogram compared to 5 megajoules per kilogram for smokeless powder. So the gasoline that sits in everyone's garage is far more hazardous and powerful than modern-day smokeless ammunition. As a kid, we got a hold of some smokeless powder with the intent that we were going to blow up a model aircraft carrier, and to our surprise, and actually to our benefit, all it did was just burn up, melt some plastic, but the carrier continued to sail unscathed. So that's how innocuous powder is. And also, the Health and Safety Code regulates the storage of powder, smokeless powder is limited to 20 pounds, and there's a conflict in the code, so one part says black powder is limited to one pound, and another says five pounds, so in close-
Do you need to add any comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
In closing, I'd just say, I'd urge the council members to accept the planning commission's recommendations as proposed in the ordinance and not open Pandora's Box. If they do revise the ordinance, I would say, please, no further restrictions on home-based FFLs. Thank you.
Your next speaker will be Leslie Lindgren. Leslie will be followed by Jennifer Hegeman, who will then be followed by Cynthia Shalit.
Hi, I'm Leslie Lindgren. I've been a resident of Folsom for over 20 years, and I raised my children here, and I've never been to a city council meeting, so this is very interesting.
Shame on you.
I feel like I'm part of Parks and Rec. Anyway, I just, I heard about this just a few days ago, and it seemed shocking to me that people are actually selling guns out of their homes. It just seems, and obviously, it's only three sellers that we know of right now, but I just felt like I would be, I would feel wrong if I didn't come and just express my opinion, that it seems like a scary thing that people are able to sell guns out of their homes, and I would just hope that you could move firearms and ammunition to the prohibited list. It seems that every other city in this area has done that, and it seems shocking that Folsom is the only place that this is allowed, so I just urge you guys to vote for that. Thanks.
Okay, our next speaker will be Jennifer Hegeman. Jennifer will be followed by Cynthia Shalit, who will then be followed by James O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor Howell and members of the council. A few thoughts on the proposed changes to the zoning code as it pertains to the sale of firearms and the manufacture of ammunition. There is not currently, nor is there proposed, a definition of a firearm in the zoning code. I believe it would be prudent to add such a definition, given the availability of military-style weapons, and to be clear of the type of firearms that the city intends to allow for sale in home occupations. I am concerned that the proposed changes would allow for the sale of up to 40 firearms a day. That's four sales per client times 10 clients a day from a residence. The proposed changes would allow the manufacture and reload of ammunition in a resident, an apartment, a duplex, or a condominium. As stated in the staff report, the city's current zoning does not allow the onsite storage of hazardous materials associated with a home occupation. This proposed change to the zoning ordinance seems to allow a clear violation of the city's code. As proposed, there is no limit to the amount of ammunition that can be stored or sold at one time. This would allow a resident in an apartment, duplex, or condominium to store unlimited amounts of ammunition, and in addition, manufacture ammunition. This puts families at risk simply because they live in a multifamily situation. The city does not currently allow the sale of firearms in the C2 and C3 zones in structures that are located less than 500 feet from a residential use and less than 1,000 feet from a property line of a school. The sales are bound outright in the BP zone. I'm not sure I see the logic in allowing firearm sales in residential neighborhoods and multifamily dwellings, but not in the commercial zones or in commercial properties near residences and schools. The lack of limits on the amount of ammunition that can be stored and sold, allowing the manufacture of ammunition in residential neighborhoods and multifamily dwellings, all seem destined to have dire unintended consequences. The city should follow the examples set by our neighboring communities and not allow the onsite sale of up to 40 firearms per day, onsite ammunition sales, and onsite ammunition manufacturing. Those six cities in Sacramento County determined that such uses were not compatible with the principal residential uses. And I agree with the previous speakers that we should allow the grandfather of the three existing businesses. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Cynthia Shalit. Cynthia will be followed by James O'Brien, who will be followed by Catherine Omorda.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow councilmembers. I'm Cynthia Shalit, and I'm here to ask you to reject this permission to allow gun sales to happen in residential neighborhoods. I can understand what the gun owners are saying, that they think that there are enough federal regulations, state regulations, even local regulations to make sure that guns are only sold to law-abiding gun buyers. But I think we can see from the statistics that there are a lot of violations of gun sales, that background checks aren't really completed, that people aren't being, sellers aren't being careful enough about who they are selling the guns to. I sort of feel like, a little story for you, because of all the responsibility you will have to make sure that these gun sellers are selling it in the appropriate way. To leave it on your code enforcement and your police department to check out every single sale is going to be a big burden on you. And next time there is a death in this community from a gunshot, which there will be soon, I assure you, that will be on you for you to think, did a gun seller in Folsom sell it to the right person, and did they do the right thing? So I urge you not to allow this change in your zoning code to allow- to allow gun sales in residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be James O'Brien. James will be followed by Catherine Omorda, who will then be followed by Lynn Bonzell.
Good evening. My name is James O'Brien. Mayor, council members, thank you for hosting this forum tonight, allowing voices from both sides to be publicly heard. I'm a 40-year California hunting and fishing license holder and one who enjoys recreational and match-competitive firearm sports. Additionally, like many present here tonight... Excuse me. Additionally, I partake in a lot... Additionally, like a lot here tonight, I also partake in tax-generating retail within Folsom. I like the Folsom community. It's friendly. It's attractive. It's welcoming. Tonight, I'm here to express my support for FFL and reloading home-based businesses within Folsom. Some tonight have cited existing laws, changing times, changing laws. When state laws regarding the use of cannabis changed, allowing for home grows, personal possession, many in opposition were not happy. I ask, how many grows are currently within your neighborhoods? What is the probability of a home grow burglary versus that of a home-based FFL? Like others, home-based FFLs and reloaders have been and should be afforded the opportunity to be responsible members of this community. That is cited earlier that 100 home-based businesses... There were 100 home-based business complaints over five years, 60 months, which seems to me to be fairly low. I heard tonight that there exist only three such FFL reloading-type businesses located within the Folsom jurisdiction. Tonight, the good sheriff of this community stated that his department can handle oversight visits of these three FFL and reloading businesses.
I'm sorry, I think you mean the police chief. We don't have a sheriff here.
I beg your pardon. The FFL and reloading... The FFL business is heavily regulated and compliance required by local, state, and federal jurisdictions, probably as much or more so than any other home-based or retail business. These FFL and home-based businesses, reloading businesses, serve a public retail need, which, like many, are currently experiencing market shortages. In closing, I did read on... I was looking at the staff directory list, and I did find in a biography, which I thought really kind of sums everything up, and that is this, is that... It did mention there, in one of the bios, that as a small business owner, one of the members of this council understands that small businesses thrive with the support of the community and the city government. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Catherine Omorda. Catherine will be followed by Lynn Bonzell, who will then be followed by Danielle Sevalingham? Sevalingham?
Hi. My name is Catherine Omorda, and I've met all of you at different community events over the years. My family's lived here for more than 20 years. And I... This is my first time coming to a council meeting. And I'm really, really surprised that this is the topic that has brought me here. I never in my wildest dreams imagined that this would even be a consideration in this community. I'm not going to take time to reiterate what so many people here have really addressed beautifully with concerns. There are so many concerns. We could talk about it all night. But I am going to say a couple of things. First of all, having met you all and seen you at community events over the years, I know you care about this community. I know you care about the safety of people here. And I'm so surprised we're even talking about this. I'm really disappointed. I'm shocked. And I really want to urge you to consider putting this on the prohibited list. The guns and the ammunition do not belong in home businesses here. There's plenty of retail space. It's not a Second Amendment issue. I have no issue with that. It's a safety issue. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Lynn Bonzell, who will be followed by Danielle Sevalingham, who will then be followed by John Wright.
Good evening, council. My name is Lynn Bonzell, and I have been a resident of Folsom for 23 years, as well as my family of three children who attended the public school system here since kindergarten all the way from graduating from Folsom High School. And I'm here... I'm a civil litigation attorney. By trade, I defend homeowners and businesses for premises liability and general negligence causes of action. That's what I do for a living. I see no provision for liability insurance at all for any of these gun owners that have this business at their properties. What I would like to see is the city council has spent more time and really look at this issue. I think that grandfathering in the people that already have the licenses, the gentlemen here today that are upset about their business being taken from them, grandfathering in makes sense. However, for future sales, it's a bad idea. That's why Auburn doesn't allow it. That's why Ranch Cordova, Rockland, Roseville, the City of Sacramento. It doesn't make sense. When I moved here back in the mid-'90s, there was approximately 35,000 people living in Folsom. We're pushing 90,000 now. So even though this has been allowed for the last 25 years, it doesn't make sense that just because a law has been in place, that that law needs to stay in place when the conditions of your community change. This is an opportunity for all of you to look at the laws, the ordinances that are in place, and how do these work with our growing community? Is this really what we want to be known for? The city in Sacramento County and Placer County, the one city where you can have a shop and sell guns from your home. Now, you allow four customers at a time at the home. The ordinance permits for two employees that are non-residents. So you have potentially six cars at one time parked in front of your house. Now, if I were to sell my home, I guarantee you that the disclosure laws are going to make me disclose that there's a business next door selling guns. It's a liability. It's a liability. It's a nuisance with the vehicles. That now affects my property damage. Now, what if I live on a circle? Can you imagine six cars in a circle? I don't live in a cul-de-sac, but I feel for those residents that do. You are literally taking up all their parking spaces. Commercial gun shops have to have parking, commercial parking at their facility. That's unfeasible in a residence. So what I'm asking for is to look at this. Look how our city has changed. It may be made sense 25 years ago. It just doesn't make sense today. And by grandfathering in the people that have the licenses, you're protecting their business, but you're just looking at this and making a smart decision for the future of our city. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Danielle Sevalingham, and please correct me if I'm wrong with your name, who will then be followed by John Wright, who will be followed by Elise McKenzie.
It's Sevalingham. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm going to keep it short. First, I want to specifically reiterate the comments that Cheryl Davis made. And I would encourage you to go back to her comments if you can, because I thought she raised some really interesting, specific points that haven't been raised tonight. And I appreciate her research. So as a mom... And I'm kind of the opposite of most folks who have spoken. I've only lived in Folsom about a month and a week. And I chose to move here with my husband and my 15-month-old son. And I think this issue is actually really simple. I don't want to... I appreciate all the minutia that folks have gotten into. But to me, it's an open and shut issue. Grandfather in the old businesses and do not... And move the sale of firearms and ammunition to the prohibited list. It's not even a close call. We want to make this place a family-friendly city that's safe for my 15-month-old to live in. Let guns be sold in commercial zones. That will take care of the concerns of the folks who want to buy guns legally. And I appreciate those concerns. And I appreciate the concerns about small businesses. But we don't need sales of guns and ammunition next door to daycares, next door to schools, next door to our children sleeping in their beds. It's a really easy one. And I would implore you to move these items to the prohibited list. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is John Wright, who will be followed by Elise McKenzie, who will then be followed by Michael Reynolds.
Mayor Howell and council members, I know you've had a long day. I saw your schedule. As I said, my name is John Wright. And after reading through the packet of information that was available online, I discovered that guns can be sold in the City of Folsom. They can be sold in District 1, District 2, and District 3. Specifically, they cannot be sold in, interestingly enough, the Business and Professional District. I also assume that it's not allowed to sell guns in Zones M1, M2, and ML. So there are options. They can be sold here. I don't believe they need to be sold in homes and houses. I believe it's too dangerous. And we already have viable options. Not just the three zones, but quite a bit of the city, they can be sold. As the first speaker said, we have a lot of retail space that's vacant. We have a lot of office space that's vacant in this city. I've heard tonight where people said, "Well, the three sellers, we need to let them continue as home-based businesses." I don't believe that's a solution. I realize it would be costly for them to move and to change. But as the presentation we had from Mr. Smith, he thought it would be between $2,500 and $4,000 just to put an alarm at his house. I'm not sure it would cost that much to do it at a retail... in a retail building. They're somewhat ready to provide that type of thing. So as I said, in the interest of safety for our children and for the adults in this community, I believe that we shouldn't have those as a home business. It's interesting that the law says 1,000 feet from any school, 500 feet from every residence, unless it's in that residential area. Then those distances don't apply unless it comes to a school, which I believe it does. So thank you tonight. I know this is a very difficult issue. And thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker will be Elise McKenzie, who will be followed by Michael Reynolds, who will then be followed by Snehal Shaw.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Board, and also law enforcement officers present tonight. Thank you. My name is Elise McKenzie. I'm with the Folsom Chapter of the California Rifle and Pistol Association. I'm also a member of the Armed Women of America. I'm a ranged safety officer with advanced safety training. And I ran a home-based business for 12 years. It was very fulfilling, a very family-oriented endeavor. And it's something to be encouraged. I believe lots of businesses have gone home since COVID, and I think it's a good thing. But the case that drew me in here tonight, which was of interest to me, was the gunsmith and the ammo reloading. I'd like to just briefly address that. Why don't they have a storefront? These are usually one-man operations. It's a craft. It's a trade. It's an artisan pursuit. Gunsmithing keeps firearms safe by diligent repair and maintenance of firearms. And ammo reloading is also the same thing. It keeps you safe. We're not safe when we use cheap, Chinese-imported ammunition. Shooters get hurt. It's better to have a trained professional working in his or her field that knows what they're doing and keeping ammo safe. So I just wanted to say that I oppose prohibiting and restricting these licensed home-based gunsmithing and ammunition sales. These are already really heavy, heavy-regulated industries. And licensed legal operations really pose no threat or danger to the community because two things. Traffic, I don't think this is the kind of business that has a lot of traffic going. It's low-key, not a lot of signage, just, you know, legitimate business. Black powder, again, it's an old-school thing, sold in very, very small quantities. It's not something you store. It goes bad. And I just don't see that that would be a danger to the community. I am concerned about safety, but I just don't see a big danger in this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Reynolds. Mike will be followed by Snehal Shaw.
Counsel, I'm Michael Reynolds, president of the Historic Resident Folsom Residents Association. I'm here tonight in support of the HPL's request to recognize the HDC as a planning body who should weigh in on this particular ordinance. And so that should be considered as part of the process before the second iteration comes through. be considered as part of the process before the second iteration comes through. And I'll highlight a couple of key points behind that. So one, I think they've highlighted the fact that home is a sanctuary, and so in the Historic District where we have a higher degree of density, you know, what people have chosen to bind to that community for, to have that potentially disrupted by this sort of shift to a blending of commercial and residential is something I think that needs to be, have additional vetting, and any decision probably in that direction should lean towards the sanctity of that, of that home, that home purchase. Number two, the ordinance, as it's written, seems to offer a bit of wide latitude, and I think we've all learned the law of unintended consequences tends to creep in, so that additional vetting is probably a prudent course to take. The city has already limitations on, you know, enforcement, as we're seeing, like with the parking stuff. So the question is, is the city staff to adequately enforce these kind of things if there is a proliferation of home-based businesses? And then finally, you know, the density of the Historic District says that some of the issues that were brought up, such as parking hours and all those other things, are getting amplified in that type of environment. So if we can send it through the HDC and get that type of vetting, likely what gets flushed out there would be prudent across the rest of the city. So that's all.
Okay, our next speaker will be Snehal Shah, and Snehal will be followed by Margie Donovan online.
Hello, greetings, City Councilmember. My name is Snehal Shah, and I've been resident of Folsom for almost more than 15 years. I came here to oppose these home-based firearm ordinance, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, I'm not here for any political or any party issues. This is strictly a safety and a security issues for the residents of the people that live in Folsom. I've been watching a lot of slides that has been presented. You know, one of the slides that shows, which noted that we have roughly three businesses that are selling the firearms, and roughly we have almost no issues around with those three businesses, those are selling firearms. But I haven't seen anything about what happens if this ordinance has passed, and if there are, say, 50s home, they are selling the firearms. What happens after that? Who is going to look at those data? Also, I haven't, did not notice about any study or any, any research being done for a given city that might have passed a similar ordinance. What happens in the next five years after that? Did the crime rate went up? Did the security went up? And if you look at the logo of City of Folsom, it says distinctive by nature, and, you know, there's a reason why it was being selected. So what I want to make sure is, if you pass this ordinance, and if you're trying to be a distinctive by nature, that's not what we want. We want to make sure that the family is secure, the neighbor is secure, the security is taken care of, and people are happy, and that's what the distinctive by nature means. So I strictly oppose these ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be online, Margie Donovan, and Margie will be followed by Bill Durston. Margie, go ahead when you're ready, and I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left. Margie, I think you're still muted. Just give her a minute. Margie, we're going to move to Bill Durston, but we'll come back to you. So Bill, if you're ready, go ahead. Okay, Bill, you need to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Dr. Bill Durston. I'm a former expert, former ex-munitions, the United States Supreme Court Combat Veteran of the Vietnam War and retired emergency physician, and I was the sole speaker to speak against the allowing home gun sales at the November 17th Planning Commission meeting. And I'm so glad and inspired to see so many people speaking, I guess, now. I want to talk, I'm also the President of Americans Against Gun Violence. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the broader perspective. More than 40,000 people are killed with guns every year in our country, and two to three times that many suffer serious, but often terrible injuries that impair them for the rest of their lives. Our rate of gun deaths is 10 times higher than the average for the other high-income democratic countries. A rate of gun homicide for high-school-age youth is 82 times higher than for the other high-income democratic countries, high-school-age students. It's not because we're more violent as a society. In fact, on average, we have lower rates of assault by any means, but because of our weak gun control laws and the extraordinarily high number of guns per capita as compared with all those other countries, guns are used more often in assaults, and that's why we have such extraordinary high rates, not only of gun homicide, but overall homicide. People speaking in favor of allowing residential gun sales have cited the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment states in its entirety, "A well-regulated militia be necessary to the security of a free state. The right of the people to keep from bear arms shall not be infringed." There was no individual right for anybody in our country to own any kind of gun outside of service in a well-regulated militia until the 2008 Roe Heller decision, which was a five-to-four decision. In Heller, the Supreme Court endorsed in a interpretation of the Second Amendment that the late Supreme Court Justice, Chief Justice Warren Burger called one of the greatest pieces of fraud on the American public he'd ever seen in his lifetime. And with regard to the alleged protective value of having a gun, there is overwhelming evidence that guns in the homes and the communities of honest, law-abiding people are far more likely to be killed or injured than protected. One study showed that the rate of someone killing an attacker or killing someone in the home versus killing an attacker was 43 to 1. Finally, I want to read to you a quote. We have an essay contest every year for high school students. I want to read to you a quote from a Folsom high school student, who was one of our winners last year. The student noted that there were no school shootings in 2020 for the first time in many years, not because we'd taken measures to protect our students, but because schools were out of session as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The student went on to write, "It's shameful that it took a pandemic-induced shutdown to quell mass shootings in America. It especially pains me to hear stories of students breathing sighs of relief when they learn they no longer had to go to school in person. Now more than ever, it has become excruciating clear that guns cause widespread fear and unease in the population. Schools should be a safe haven for students and a hub for collaborative education, not a site of trauma and worry. Because of the presence of guns in their communities, young people in America have experienced great harm."
Bill, could you wrap up?
Sure. I'll comment about the speaker who said how safe Folsom was. It was thought that Parkland was safe until the Marjorie Stone and Douglas mass shooting. Whether or not you vote to ban residential gun sales in big-scale things is not going to have a big effect on the number of gun deaths and injuries in our state or country and in the greater Folsom, but will say a great deal about what you value more, the profits of your gun dealers or the safety and well-being of the children in Folsom. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Am I audible?
Yes, Margie, you are. When you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Howell and respectful council members. My name is Margie Donovan. I have lived in this city for 14 years. I chose to retire from the Bay Area to Folsom because of the quaint community in which it is. I do not want to enter into the gun debate, but I will state this. It is not an issue of Second Amendment. Second Amendment is for gun owners. I roll into the debate about home-based businesses. There would be many more people at this meeting tonight had they understood what this topic was. As I went about my daily life, I asked many of business owners and workers in businesses and community people if they knew this was on the agenda. The first answer was no. The second answer was, oh, it's about people working at home. There is a big difference in home-based businesses and somebody working from home for intel. No one knows that person is working at home unless you're a close neighbor and you're watching if they're at home or gone. As a person who happens to be blind and part of the community of people with disabilities that use paratransit formerly diolarized, we have quite a number of concerns. And I'm concerned that paratransit buses that we now allow in the city are two feet longer than the old vehicles. They must park at the curb to load and unload a passenger. That is a federal requirement under Department of Transportation. As our neighborhoods allow, as the city allows more and more businesses in our neighborhoods, those vehicles will not be able to pick up people who use wheelchairs, people who are blind, are elderly, which is quickly growing with disabilities, people using walkers. They will not be able to lower their wheelchair ramps. They will have to be parked in the street, which is they cannot do for safety reasons. They follow many of the same rules as school bus drivers. I encourage the City Council to please take a look at the full impact in this city. Right now, as earlier mentioned, we have quite a number of businesses along East Diddwell, but throughout the city as well, that are not occupied. I question why we would even consider occupying homes with businesses and more businesses when our storefronts are not occupied. I also wish to mention code enforcement. I work closely with code enforcement over disability issues. Our code enforcement department is stellar. However, they have more to enforce than just a couple of people can manage. It took over nine months for me to get sidewalk vendors off the sidewalk, and this wonderful City Council passed a new ordinance that provided for five-day declared so that people with disabilities, mothers with strollers, can pass safely without walking out into dangerous streets. I hope that I will be able to maintain that safety, and I can assure you, if we open up home businesses and extend our invites to home businesses, there will be too many cars, and many are already parked across sidewalks.
Margie, I need, I need you to wrap up.
Thank you. I ask the City Council to take the full city into consideration and all its residents by doing a complete and thorough study. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that concludes our request to speak, but before we move on, I just want to make sure, is anybody online who wants to address the council? Okay, Madam Mayor, it seems you have no further requests to speak on this item.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing, and I'll ask if we have any questions of staff or comments from council members.
Just because this has come up several times, Mr. City Attorney, my understanding is that we don't have the ability to grandfather in the current sellers of firearms. Is that correct? That's what I thought I learned from the Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, my goodness. Councilmember Aquino, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the City Council does have the ability to grandfather in a particular use.
Okay, interesting, because that, that's not what I thought I learned from the Planning Commission. We do have the ability to grandfather in someone. Interesting.
Yes, ma'am.
This will be our last, we've actually already closed the public hearing, but this will be our last speaker online.
Okay, Jaya Bediqa, I saw you raise your hand right as we closed it, so go ahead. We'll give you three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening to the City Council. Sorry, I apologize for the technical issues that I had, and I thank you for letting me speak regarding the item number 11. So I just wanted to bring to the city's attention a couple of current events. One is AB 1594, which is currently circulating through the process of becoming a bill that will probably be signed by the governor if it gets there, allowing individuals to sue manufacturers and sellers of firearms. The other is a recent ordinance passed by the City of San Jose requiring liability insurance for all gun owners. And the third is a concerted increase in ghost guns, both in articles local and statewide, and also cities that are taking active steps in prohibiting manufacturing and to prevent distribution of pistols. I, I just wanted to talk about liability angle towards the city. We already have two lawsuits. One is the pinhole pipe issue. Not sure where it's at. Haven't been following that closely. The other is the CBRA, and I heard from Mr. Perrington through the City Attorney's Unit that the city is self-insured, but I think it just raises the question of what, if any, is a ceiling with regard to the number of lawsuits or liabilities that we are willing to incur and willing to take on and even promote, and where are the limits? I find that the regulation as drawn and the ordinances as drawn don't have many, and I'm concerned about that, and I thank you again. Bye-bye.
Any other questions of staff now that we've reclosed the public hearing?
I have one, I have one that was mentioned a few times about the disclosure of, of a home-based business that sells guns. Is it required when selling a home?
I don't know that there's even a requirement that, that the neighbors be aware of. I'm going to go back to Mr. Klein's example, that this is someone that lives in his neighborhood, and Bruce has lived there a long time, and this other guy's lived there a long time, and he didn't know it was there.
And that's what triggered the question.
You can't disclose something you don't know. Did you have another comment?
No, I was, I was just going to say, I'd have to look into that further, but as you stated, if you're not aware of it, you can't really disclose something that you're, you don't know. I'd have to look into the disclosure laws related to real estate transactions.
And I'd be, I'd be kind of curious to know if anybody, the other, the three locations that are in town now, if the neighbors even know that, that that's happening. You know, and this is just, it's kind of a weird thing, because I've actually had a home-based business for more than 20 years, but it's, you know, it's engineering consulting, so I have never, ever had a customer come to my house. It's basically all done electronically, and if I have to meet with them, I go to their office or meet in a coffee shop or meet at a construction site. So, and I do live in Cul-de-sac, and that's why I would never have that kind of situation. I don't want anybody at my house, and if I remember correctly, it was part of the process when I applied for that first business license and for the home occupancy permit. That was strongly discouraged for me to have customers at my home. So, any more questions, Rosario?
I'm good, I'm good.
I have one, and it's, it's-
YK was going to go.
Oh, go ahead.
Good. This is for clarification, Mr. Desmond. One of the resident, Cheryl Davis, mentioned, we do have some violations and complaints on the existing businesses, whereas we showed there are no complaints from those three businesses. Maybe getting some additional information or research.
Those were violations with the federal government, not with us.
Yeah, that, that's, that's correct. As the mayor stated, those were violations of the rules from the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms, the US Bureau. Code enforcement did not receive any complaints, and I'll defer to the police whether they received any notification from ATF regarding those violations.
Yeah, maybe the other way of saying, since federal government inspected those facilities, they found something and they recorded those as a complaint is maybe a right statement to say, and we are not inspecting any of those facilities.
Staff was not aware that those complaints had been communicated to us. So like I said, I'll defer to the police department. Code enforcement was not aware of any ATF violations.
And if I remember correctly, what Ms. Davis said was that there was missing paperwork, that sort of thing. I don't know that anybody from the federal government inspected that home either. She didn't say that. There was paperwork missing, it sounds like. Okay. Mike?
Yeah, so the, the question was raised by two of the speakers about what the, or raised that there is some inconsistency with the standing of the HDC, the Historic District Commission, as it relates to ordinance changes. And I was wondering if maybe the city attorney, you could kind of lay out for everyone what the, what the specific role is of the HDC, and perhaps this Mayor Howell can add some color to the sort of history of what has been taken before that board at, with regard to ordinance changes, because it has a specific purpose in my mind, and that's to review discreet individual projects and not ordinances. But the suggestion was made that they should have a voice in this for fairly obvious reasons. I just want to get, want to get some clarity on that.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Kozdowski, Member, Madam Mayor, Member of the City Council. You are all familiar with Chapter 17.52, the Historic District, chapter of the zoning code.
Rolls right off the tongue, yeah.
Right, of the zoning code.
Yeah, we have it memorized.
Which the City Council had crafted a limitation, left and right limitation, as to what the duties of the HDC Commission, Historic District Commission, are. And most of the duties that the City Council conferred upon the commission involve reviewing and also approving development projects within this historic, historic district area, and there are many, many subareas within the Historic District. So those projects are reviewed exclusively by the HDC and not the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission reviews all of the older development projects everywhere else in the City of Folsom, and also development-related ordinances citywide. And that is why the Amendment Chapter of the Zoning Code provides that the proposed amendment to the Zoning Code goes to the Planning Commission for vetting, for review, before they are proposed, I mean, presented to the City Council for review and the final action. However, having said that, the City Council has brought this question to also say, we want to have this proposal be reviewed by the Historic District Commission. You can do so. You don't have to, but you can do so, before this brought back to the council.
I'm going to kind of go back to what I said when we started this discussion, because typically the Planning Commission doesn't review or make recommended changes to ordinances either unless they relate to development, and this really doesn't relate to development. This started because a single barber left the commercial location that he was working in for a long list of reasons during, during the pandemic, when he chose not to be exposed to people that were not wearing masks. There was, there were things that were going on at this particular barber shop that was very upsetting to this particular barber. So that is the reason that this particular barber elected to do what he thought he had permission to do without getting into a dispute over that, because I think there's disagreement about whether he did what he was allowed to do or not. But this started at a single location in Briggs Ranch, and a bunch of neighbors got up in arms about it and went to the Planning Commission. That's what started this whole thing. This all had to do with a barber shop that I do not believe is even operating. So-
Ironically enough, the proposed ordinance outlaws what he did, specifically by not allowing commercial storefronts of any kind, even if they're concealed by a garage door at night.
Right. So anyway, I just want to remind everybody, that's, that's how this started. So this was not, you know, an effort to completely review the home occupation ordinance. It kind of came up because of this one issue.
But, but actually, I agree with you. It definitely prompted a closer look and probably expedited the review of this, but wouldn't this ordinance have been reviewed as part of the overall zoning code update anyway?
Yes, it would have.
Okay.
We just kind of pulled it out for this purpose. It got more attention.
Jumped ahead a little bit, yeah.
I really think, you know, we effectively treat the Historic District Commission as the Planning Commission for the Historic District, and I do think, I mean, I don't think that we need to be in a rush with this. I would like to see this routed to the Historic District Commission, give them an opportunity to weigh in, especially as it relates to, you know, the in- to weigh in, especially as it relates to, you know, the increased number of customers or clients that you can have, and how that may have an effect on parking. I do think before it goes to them, we do need to add ammunition manufacture and reload to the prohibited list, because we have to comply with the fire code. So, to me, that's off the table. It needs to go on the prohibited list, no questions.
And I'm with you, Sarah. If the fire department doesn't want it allowed, then I'm with whatever the fire...
Well, the fire code does not allow it in a residential, in a residence, for anything except residential use.
Okay, so we're just lucky that that 55-gallon drum of black powder that was found behind the Chan House during the restoration never exploded. Was there for probably 20 years. I'm not necessarily a big fan of sending this back to the Historic District Commission. I think this council is more than experienced enough and qualified enough to make a decision moving forward. If we were to talk about this, I don't see any reason to have four customers at a time for any business.
Yeah.
I'm happy with one.
Yeah, I was going to say that just the general volume issue is significant in any kind of retailing, irrespective of what somebody might be selling out of their garage.
Right.
Well, I think that came up because of, like, for example, if you're teaching swim lessons. It isn't, at least when my kids went to swim lessons at a home in Folsom, it wasn't one kid at a time, it probably was three or four kids at a time. And so, I think that is probably the impetus for that.
Okay. And with regard to the, you know, two non-residents, I'm guessing that that has to do predominantly with somebody that's running a daycare facility that has help, or maybe another coach on a swim team. I didn't really think about swimming lessons. Maybe family counseling if there's more than one family member. I don't know where that would apply. But, you know, again, I live in a cul-de-sac. I don't have customers that come to my house, and there's no other business, home occupied businesses in my cul... Well, no, there might be. That's that one problem neighbor that we have to have a conversation with.
Desmond, what's the language that restricts kind of parking and traffic currently?
But I can tell you that I do have another neighbor right next door to my house that gets at least five or six Amazon deliveries a day.
Yeah, the gray vans come.
So, in the current ordinance, and generally the rules are not changed in the new ordinance with regard to parking, if they have a commercial vehicle associated with their business, they have to have it parked off-site.
Off-street, yeah.
And in general, any business activity should not be visible from the street. But it comes to their customers, that's a different matter. The customers would park on the street unless they've provided off-street parking, but they're not required to for their customers.
Was there a limitation in the existing ordinance? I'm sorry, I've lost track of that little detail before we got this proposed modification.
The limitation in the existing ordinance...
Or was it more just about, don't be a nuisance?
Yeah, it's 1761-040 under standards. We have the nuisance language in there, but we also have, in Section C, under vehicle parking, we have the limitation on a commercial vehicle, its size, and its location. And then, under section, that's in that same section, under subsection E, nuisances, it says, "No activity which produces noise, smoke, odor, glare, electrical interference, or vibrations discernible beyond the site is allowed." It also, in subsection F, gives the director, as well as other hearing bodies, the commission or the council, to impose additional conditions on the permit if that's warranted. So, you would have the ability to place further parking restrictions on that particular business if that was warranted.
So, to some extent, every one of these business licenses or occupation licenses is a special use approval of some sort, because we can put additional restrictions individually on people? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what...
I'm conflating a couple of things that have real meaning, so I don't want to make it seem like that. It's just the words that were handy to me as I said that. But if we can always place additional restrictions on a given application for a home occupation business, then the, just the perception that there might be a nuisance could trigger the staff to put restrictions on? Is that effectively how it exists currently?
Yeah, that's correct.
But there's not an existing criteria that says four visitors per hour over the course of 10 hours, or whatever hours operations are.
So, right now, the current limitation is two persons at a time, and then no more than eight during the day. If they were in violation of that, and so if we've got a complaint and code enforcement went out and validated that, then upon their renewal, the city wouldn't have to renew their license, or the city could impose additional...
That was the thing I was looking for, the two at a time, eight in a day. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, in order to focus this discussion and see if we are going to be making decisions tonight or possibly referring this, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay. I have a question that I'm curious about. So, in respect to the Historic District Commission, the planning commission. So, this is a citywide ordinance. So, having it go to the Historic District Commission, is that because there's an expectation that there would be something different?
I think that's what the people... I think that's what the people who made the request think would happen.
But it's not, correct?
I don't think so.
So, would the Historic District Commission then be a bottleneck to the process?
Well, I think that it's possibly something in this ordinance would affect them in a way that we haven't thought of, or perhaps differently than the rest of the city, so it makes sense to have them vetted.
If we sent it there, I would hope that we wouldn't ask them to opine on gun sales, but rather the totality of retailing and how that might affect the street grid if it became congested. I think that was the issue, is that the physical layout of the historic district is unique to the city, and that traffic issues are sometimes significant down there. So, it was really about that.
So, then the expectation would be that the Historic District Commission can make exceptions to this ordinance?
I think that they could make recommendations to us, just like the planning commission has.
So, I'd like to just comment on that real quick. So, right now, the citywide regulations live outside of the historic district regulations in Chapter 17.52 of the municipal code. What I think is being inferred or recommended is that maybe there would be some unique provisions that might be accepted within this area, in which case, like sign regulations, then they would have a special provision. If the city council were to put more restrictions than what was recommended by the planning commission, that may address some of the concerns that came up, but you wouldn't have a way of knowing that. So, right now, it's a citywide regulation. It isn't something that we would traditionally take to the Historic District Commission. But I think the request moving forward is that we consider that as a parallel body and look at that differently. I think you're being asked tonight whether you would send this particular home occupation ordinance to the Historic District Commission, so they could weigh in on whether or not it might be appropriate to have unique provisions for the historic district as it relates to home occupations.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to make a motion.
I was just going to say, I discovered a minor unintentional error in one section that does relate to the Historic District Commission, and I would recommend that it be included in whatever motion. That's in Section 17.61-055 of the new ordinance. It's in Attachment 1A, under appeals. It says that all appeals would be going to the planning commission. That is not the, that was not the intent. If the business is located in the historic district, it should be going to the Historic District Commission. So, the word "planning" should be struck throughout that paragraph, and in the section in 17.55, it should say, it should state that, my apologies...
So, I have it right here, Desmond, but I actually asked this very question of the city attorney via email, and I think that actually is up to the city council, right? So, okay, so that could be part of what is considered. Okay. So, I'm just going to make a motion, and we'll see where this goes. I'm going to move that we add ammunition manufacture and reload to the prohibited list. We make that change, and then we send this proposed ordinance over to the Historic District Commission for their feedback.
I'll second that, so we can discuss it or vote on it.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments they want to make before we...
Sarah, just for clarification, I know right now, planning commission proposed to us on the sale and storage of ammunition off the prohibited list.
Sarah just said to add it to prohibited.
Not the sale and storage of ammunition. I'm talking about ammunition manufacturer and reload. That, as I understand it, I'm not a gun person, that involves black powder and smokeless powder, and per the fire code, that is not prohibited in a residence except for residential use. So, no matter what ultimately happens with everything else, ammunition manufacture and reload is going to be on the prohibited list if we want to comply with the fire code. So, I'm saying, before we send it to the Historic District Commission, let's put it on here.
But home-based businesses would still be able to sell ammunition, just not...
According to, yes, if we accept their other recommendations of the planning commission, yes. Are you clear, Desmond, on the motion? Okay.
You good, Mike?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
It was clear to me, yeah. I seconded it.
So, this will, I know, the recommendation city council is saying, so sale of the guns is going to be off the prohibited list.
We're going to ask the HTC for some feedback.
Yeah, I'm saying, we're going to take the recommendations from the planning commission with the addition of ammunition manufacture and reload, put that on the prohibited list, and send everything to the Historic District Commission for their feedback. Then it will come back to us, if the majority of the council approves to send it there. It will come back to us, and we ultimately can decide how to vote on these things. I'm just suggesting that we get the feedback of the Historic District Commission.
So, just keeping in mind that what is sent to the HTC is still a set, is still a proposal.
Yes.
Okay. And the only other thing that I'll add to that is that I want to make sure that appeals ultimately, that appellants have the ability to come all the way to the city council.
Yeah, that's how it is proposed.
No, it's, I don't know, I don't know where this is going to go, how much, because the folks from HPL are also talking about trying to completely bifurcate the Historic District Commission from the planning commission. So, should that happen at some future point in time, I don't want it to mean that Historic District says no, then the appeal goes to the planning commission. I want anybody to be able to get to the council. However that has to happen, an appeal can come all the way to the council.
Okay, well, based on the recommendation from the planning commission, if a community development department decision is appealed, it only goes to the planning commission.
I'm saying...
And then it comes to the city council.
Right. All I'm saying is, I want anything that is denied by, denied or approved, whichever way the appeal goes, through community development, that they have the ability to have the council make the final decision.
Yes, that's how it is.
I just don't want it to finalize with HTC or with the planning commission. I want it to come here.
So, Mayor, you're saying when it comes back, you would have that conversation and want your...
No, I want to include that in the recommendations.
Include that in what goes to the HTC.
If we vote to send it to HTC, I want that in there.
That version needs to...
It's already in here. It's in there. Yes.
You're saying, don't give us a recommendation to change that.
No, I'm saying that it wasn't clear, because the planning commission wanted to do one thing, staff wanted to do another, and I'm saying, I want to send that language back to HTC.
Are you referring to the two level? There was a two level? So, if it was from HD, so if it was the staff, then HTC and planning would be the second level? You're saying it would go all the way up to the council?
Right now, right now, if Pam says no, then it could theoretically go to Historic District Commission for appeal, and then to the planning commission as the second level.
Right.
I don't want it to stop at the planning commission. I want it to stop here.
Agree.
Just to clarify, the intent with the two levels of appeal is it would always end up at the city council. The error that was in the ordinance was that it should have said, the first appeal would go to the planning commission or the Historic District Commission as applicable. So, if your business, if your home occupation business and your home occupation permit were situated in the historic district, you would go first to the Historic District Commission, and then if there was a subsequent appeal, that would be heard by the city council.
Okay, then just put that language in there so that it's very clear.
Okay. Let me restate my motion. I am going to move that we take this revised staff report right here and make two changes. Add ammunition manufacture and reload to the prohibited list, and in Section 17.61.055 titled "Appeals," wherever it says "planning commission," make it also say "planning commission" or "Historic District Commission." And then we send it all to the Historic District Commission right now and ask them for their feedback.
I will renew my second.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have a problem if we add language to ensure that appeals will ultimately...
It's already in there. That's the recommendation already.
That's what it says.
I don't think, it's not clear enough to me. And it's because, it's because of, right now, there's an issue, there's a little bit of rubbing going on between the Historic District Commission and what those folks want to do versus...
But this right here, it says, "The decision of the planning commission." We're going to change that to say, "The decision of the planning or Historic District Commission may be appealed to the city council within 10 days."
Okay, as long as it says city council, I just didn't want to say two levels of appeal.
Okay.
But what was the intention, to only move back those two, but not the sale? Because one body of whom we appointed has given a recommendation, dropping those two from the prohibited list, and city council is adding those, some of them, to the prohibited list and sending it to the historic district. So, I don't know what message are we sending it to them? In my view, since Historic District is asking for a review, planning commission did their part, and let the historic commission do their part too. Let the details come to...
Well, I agree with you, but they need to know that the fire code prohibits ammunition manufacture and reload in a residence except for residential use. That is new information from the fire chief, so I'm suggesting, I'm moving that we add that information to them, so they have accurate information before they make recommendations to us. The planning commission was not aware, when they took that off the prohibited list, that it violated the fire code.
Yeah, we're not giving it to them to approve. We're just asking for their input, and then it's going to come right back to us, and we're going to be sitting here a month from now with the same hard decision to make.
Right.
So, that code probably, planning commission is not aware, hence they remove from the prohibited list.
They obviously were not aware, or they wouldn't have done what they did.
That is correct. They were not aware that it was opposed, or that it was in violation of the California Fire Code. Staff had originally presented it to the commission as a prohibited use list. They reacted to some of the speakers who were saying that, you know, as you heard tonight, that smokeless powder is not all that flammable. However, as Councilmember Aquino stated, and as the fire chief has stated, it is in conflict with the California Fire Code. But they were not aware of that at the time.
Okay, so is everyone good now?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Chalam Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
Thank you, Desmond, for all your work.
Desmond, thank you so much.
Sorry to drag it out a little longer.
Yeah, thank you so much. You know, you did a good job.
Okay, that moves us to item 12, New Business.
Your item 12 under New Business is consideration of letter in response to demand letter received from Scott Rafferty regarding alleged noncompliance with the Brown Act.
Okay, Steve, did you want to introduce this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. There's really not much to introduce. I would request Madam Mayor canvas, see if there's any speaker who would like to speak on this item.
Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? We don't have any cards up here. Anybody online?
Are there any speakers online who would like to address item number 12? I don't see any hands raised, but I want to give an opportunity.
Okay, then, do we have a motion?
Seeing none.
What should the form of this motion be, Mr. City Attorney? Because I'm willing to make one.
Thank you, Councilmember Kozlowski. If I may, staff recommends that the city council move to approve proposed reply letter to, in response to the demand letter received.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalam Chirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. And with that, we will move to city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Howell. The city of Folsom is launching eTrakit, a new electronic development permit and processing system on March 14th. This convenient new tool will streamline requests and make it even easier to interact with the city's community development department. The new digital eTrakit portal is a one-stop shop for all development-related permits, plans, and activities. Customers can apply for building permits and planning entitlements, schedule inspections, check the status of a permit or project, and pay online with credit cards or electronic checks. Access to these services online without taking a trip to city hall, and you can find out more on our website. The Friends of the Folsom Library is biannual book sale takes place March 11th through the 13th, featuring thousands of books and media at deeply discounted prices. Shop from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. this coming Friday for the best selection. $5 admission on Friday. Only military with ID and Friends of the Folsom Library members are free, and admission is free Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 to 4:00. And again, you can find out more on our website. And finally, the city of Folsom recently completed a project that allows the city to remotely manage many of its traffic signal enclosures. Folsom was one of two cities in California to implement Genentech's mechanical padlocks to secure its traffic signals. These locks allow traffic department staff to remotely control and monitor who, when, and how traffic cabinets are in access, and the city won a Best in Show Award in partnership with Genetek and EYEP Solutions at the annual Intelligent Transportation Society of America Conference for these cutting-edge enclosures. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I want to share a little bit, as a restaurant owner, with the commercial organic food waste. It is not easy. It's actually pretty challenging, but it still has to be done, and I just wanted to share that. I'm getting a slow start because there are, there's a shortage and a delay on getting the bins. So, but it's still, I gotta say, it's not as easy as, as I expected. I just want to give a great job to Elaine and staff for this afternoon's strategic planning session. I think that this is a great start to creating a vision and just getting some, keeping Folsom on the forefront. Also, I want to share that, you know, there was a press conference on the 20th of February for the city of Rancho Cordova and Sci-Fi Networks that announced the launch of their Rancho Cordova Fiber City Project. And when I was watching it on the news, I thought that could have been Folsom getting into that, but we chose not to, and it was something that.
Come drive around my neighborhood because you're installing the cable on Randall and Willow Creek.
Okay, and the last one is that there is a Folsom Wine Fest on April 2nd, and I attended the one in late 2021, which was really good, well-attended. And then I started visiting some of the local wineries in our region, and it's, I didn't realize how, how fun they really are. I'm not a much of a wine drinker, but they are fun to visit. So hopefully one day, the, our region will be competing with Napa on wines. That's it.
That's awesome.
They already are.
YK?
Yeah, mine is going to be short, but I still want to know something on the cyber city one, not knowing the details. But before that, the biggest, you know, congratulations to Public Works team. Mark, please, my sincere, you know, congratulations to your team for collaborating with the technologies to develop the technology and implement. That's a big deal. It's not that they bought and installed. No, that's not the case. You know, I was there at the conference. I was impressed, and that, that firm was, you know, so much, you know, appreciative of what our efforts are. Thank you for your team. And going back to the 1G fiber network, not knowing how the implementation is happening, maybe it helps Elaine to give some update on the current vendor Netfly and their strategy to implement in our city? Because I was there at the Sci-Fi Network for 1 gigabit, and I felt the same way what Rosario felt. And also, I asked several questions for them, because I was there in person. You know, how soon you can start enabling the connectivity for that neighborhood you are installing today? Those kind of questions, and the number is, you know, less than six months. So, not knowing what Netfly is, it helps. Even though they are P, public utilities free card they have, they can come and install it, but asking a couple of more questions is helpful.
I can certainly check on the status of Netly, their application, and forward that to the council.
Yeah, maybe. After hearing that one, I probably may have a recommendation, request to our mayor to bring the Sci-Fi, based on that, I don't know. So, not knowing what it is, it's unfair for me to ask for it. Thank you.
So I, I think it sounds like you need to have a conversation with staff, and then we'll decide whether or not it needs to be agendized.
True, thank you.
I don't, I don't want us to have to solve a, a technical issue that's best dealt with by Public Works Department here.
True. Since I, I send that kudos, I'm, I'm sure they're going to give me more information on that.
Because, because if that's the case, Mike and I are gonna do it. Anything else? Sarah?
Per council direction, the vice mayor and I are heading up a committee to inventory and evaluate city-owned properties. So, the rest of the committee, Joe Gagliardi from the Greater Folsom Partnership, Brian Wallace and Will Kempton from Parks and Rec Commission, and then the council agreed to five additional Folsom residents. So, those five are Lance Klug with Reeve Knight Construction, Clark Witten, who is retired from Sacramento County, did economic development there, Jennifer Cabrera, who is an architect with State Parks, Robert Goss, former Parks and Recreation Director, who retired a few years ago from the city, and then Todd Spielman, who puts on concerts. He has contracts with Rockland and City of Sacramento, and I believe City of Roseville. So, we have our first meeting this Friday, and we will be looking at the about 12 parcels or so that are vacant in the city of Folsom that are city-owned, and also Einstein Cafe at the library, which is vacant. So, I'll be anxious to report back to you guys about July 1st. That's it.
Mike?
Okay, just two quick things. We had our Policy and Innovation Committee meeting for SACOG earlier this week, and there is an interest by the SACOG staff to have some discussion about projects that we may have that fit the transportation funding that is coming down the pike, if you ignore the pun. There are a couple of programs that have gotten a big slug of money added to them that are existing programs, and then there are additional programs coming. So, I'll, I'll end up talking with the city manager and Public Works Director about that, but just heads up to everybody, there's some money coming. And I think one of the, one of the primary things where we can kind of help the region out universally is sharing some of our expertise with developing trail networks, because there is a specific program for regional trail systems to improve multimodal transportation of all kinds. So, that's coming. And then I just wanted to congratulate the Vista del Lago track team, who I have very small affiliation with. We had a, we had a, we had a school district track meet for fun, but Vista del Lago scored the most points in three of the four divisions, varsity boys, varsity girls, froshoff girls, and Folsom High won the froshoff boys division. So there's going to be a good rivalry going between Vista and Folsom for years to come. Thank you very much.
Awesome. All good. Usual recommendations about driving the speed limit everywhere. Stop signs applied to everyone, red lights applied to everyone, and when the light turns yellow, that means slow down, not step on the gas. Pretend your mother's driving behind you. If you're out walking or biking at night, please wear clothes that are visible to people driving those, those large vehicles that would hurt you significantly if they hit you, and stay on the sidewalk where there is one. No news on, no news from Regional SAN, no news from RT. Everything is going well, and even Margie Donovan was very complimentary about the changes to the service in Folsom. Margie had been one of our more tougher clients to please, so we were very happy to hear that she was happy. And, what else is going on? We, we, when's our next Placerville JPI meeting?
That would be the May meeting.
Okay. And that's the, the, the agency, the Joint Powers Authority that owns the railroad line that we talked about at the last council meeting. So, I'll just, Mark, can you and I, again, another subject that we still haven't hammered out. And with that, we will close the meeting on, in memory of all of those poor unfortunate people that have been lost in Ukraine.